Good evening. And welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, November twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, six P M. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. And clerk, would you put the flag up, please? To rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. That's the public righteous stance. One nation, under God, invisible liberty and justice for all. Good evening. In order to maintain decorum, I will ask you to abide by a few meeting guidelines regarding public comment procedures and conduct for tonight's meeting. We understand this topic is emotional for many. However, I ask you to be respectful of the commission, the panelists, and all participants. Any use of profanity or hostile language is unacceptable. You will be asked to refrain from using such language, or you will be be removed from the webinar. Further, I ask you to be respectful of the many who wish to speak on this topic. Please keep it, please keep your comments brief. I'll accept. I will accept longer comments from groups who like to submit group statements. However, I ask most comments be no more than two to three minutes to give everyone who wishes an opportunity to speak. You may ask questions during a public comment period. However, the intent of the public comment period is to provide comment on a specific item and not engage in back and forth. A commission member may take up direct it and direct it to the city manager on the public's behalf. This is at the discretion of the commission. If you would like to provide public commentary, you may do so either by typing in the Q and A future or by raising your hand. If you are participating by phone, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine and mute or all mute yourself by using star six. You will be called upon to speak by myself or the clerk of the commission. Finally, the written public comment received by the city prior to November seventeenth, twelve P M. Have been compiled and attached to a public meeting packet. If you have submitted comment as part of this packet, in the interest of time, I ask you to please not read this repetitive comment tonight. You may however amend your comments previously submitted. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Helena City Commission. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney and Co.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Presentations. A move for the Helena Public Arts to fund the printing of artwork installation for the west facing window of J E Allen Livery Building in collaboration with the Rodney Street Project. Who's presenting this? Is there a representative from Helena's Public Arts Committee? Janie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and members of the commission. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
My name is Jenny Stapp, and I am the current Chair of the Helena Public Art Committee. And I'm joined by Amanda Reese, who is also a member of the committee and serves as an artist resident on the Rodney Street is project. We're very pleased to bring you this motion tonight. We've had some lengthy discussions about the benefits of the Rodney Street is project. I'm sure you've seen some of the remarkable improvements that have gone on in that sector of Helena. And the Helena Public Art Committee is really proud to be a part of the ongoing improvements in that area. Amanda's going to share more details of the intended use of Helena Public Art Funds to help to fund art installations on the west facing windows of the J E Allen Livery Building. In the discussions of the Helena Public Art Committee, we're recommending that we expend fifty six hundred and fifty dollars of our budget this fiscal year to support these art installations. Mayor Collins, I'd like to turn it over to Amanda Reese.
Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background about the Rodney Street is project. It is an artist-led creative place making exploration of the unique and historic identity of Helena's Rodney Street neighborhood. It is a collaboration between the Myrna Loy, the City of Helena, community members, and individual artists. The artists and residents have explored many different ways to engage with our community and explore ways to make the Rodney Street neighborhood an even better place to live, work, and play for everyone. Projects have included visual storytelling with photographs and videos, community workshops, parklet prototyping, block parties, neighborhood walks, dumpster murals, window art installations, and public seating to add to the vibrancy and character of the area. One notable project has been the reimagining of the facade of the historic J E Allen Livery Building at three one two Bracket Ridge Street, which is owned by Lewis and Clark County. The building has served as the Lewis and Clark Commissioners Garage since the nineteen twenties and houses maintenance equipment, a welding shop, and courthouse and municipal storage. This particular project has been a unique opportunity to transform a forgotten facade of an important building into a piece of public art while also working to preserve the historic charm and character of this neighborhood fixture. After completing the transformation of the south face of the building, the Rodney Street is team has set their sights on turning the twenty nine windows covering the building into a public art gallery for everyone to enjoy. A call for artists was announced, and seven artists were chosen to be commissioned by the Myrna Loy to display their artworks in the windows of the livery building. Artist Kelly Rathbone Revo was selected to create fifteen watercolor portraits for the west face of the building. Each subject was chosen from a list of community-led nominations of modern day residents who represent the spirit of the neighborhood's past, present, and future. Each watercolor will be scanned, printed on vinyl at a large scale, and installed in the windows of the livery building. The Helena Public Art Committee has the opportunity to collaborate with the Rodney Street is team to provide financial support by using a portion of H PAC's annual budget towards the fifteen vinyl printed window installations for the west side of the J E Allen Livery Building as commissioned through the Myrna Loy. And at the beginning of this project, the Rodney Street is team distributed about seven hundred surveys to the neighborhood community members to learn more about what respondents treasure about the area, as well as what could make it even better. And results from about a hundred and twenty five of those people found that many respondents treasured the history of the area as well as preserving its unique charm. The livery building window project further complements both of these themes and adds to the identity of the Rodney Street neighborhood. This building has served as a file resource for Lewis and Clark County's maintenance crew and storage for over a hundred years. By reimagining the boarded windows of this historic county-owned building, we are making the building more accessible with public to with public art. And so we have the unique art opportunity today to support an incredibly meaningful public art project that celebrates the identity of this historic neighborhood. Uh, thank you for your time and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Please.
What is the timeline for this project?
So I'm hoping that all of the portraits will be done here in the next few weeks and I would love to have the windows installed by January twenty second. Of course, that's going to be weather dependent.
Great, thank you. Really exciting project. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? And clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I don't see any hands raised or any written public comment on this item.
Okay, this time do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, and I think maybe the city manager can correct me, was this just an information item?
They're asking for us to approve funding.
I, okay, well, I'm happy to move. Um, I will move for the Public Art Committee to fund the printing of artwork installations for the west facing windows of the J E Allen Livery Building in collaboration with the Rodney Street is project.
Second. As we move then second it, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Hey.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Proclamation, Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Helena, Montana celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty one point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees as they as they are responsible for sixty one point five, sixty five point one percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand and nineteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty seven point one of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Eighty eight percent of the U S consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And ninety two percent of small businesses business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas ninety seven percent of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, eighty five percent of them also encourage friends and family to do so. Whereas fifty six percent of shoppers reported they shop online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in two thousand and twenty. And more than fifty percent of consumer who report a shopping small business endorse a local business on social media or shop at a local business because of social media recommendation. And whereas Helena, Montana supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocates advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Whereas I urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Now therefore, I will McCollins, Mayor of the City of Helena, do hereby proclaim November twenty seven, two thousand and twenty one as Small Business Saturday throughout the city of Helena, Montana. Witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana to be affixed on this twenty second day of November, two thousand and twenty one. Will McCollins, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Do we have a representative of the Small Business Commission here? Present. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately for both of the proclamations this evening, we were unable to get a local representative.
Thank you. The second proclamation we have tonight is for the nonprofits. City of Helena proclamation, whereas nonprofit organization enrich daily daily living for people all of all walks of life in the greater Helena area. And whereas nonprofits help provide critical safety net support in health and human services as dramatically witnessed during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas nonprofits recruit, train, coordinate, and support volunteers to aid our neighbors in need, provide crisis relief, mentor youth, and address community needs. And whereas nonprofits bring us work of arts, music, ballet, theater, and countless other cultural experiences that entertain and inspire us. And whereas the role nonprofit play in providing fundamental amenities and enhancing the quality of life, strengthening the community vitality, which helps attract new businesses and retain existing ones. And whereas Montana Shares and the United Way of the Lewis and Clark area annually conduct work flicks fundraising campaign that enable engaged and caring employees to provide financial support to more than seventy Helena-based nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, I will McCollins, Mayor of the City of Helena, do hereby proclaim the month of November, two thousand and twenty one as Supporting Nonprofits Month in the City of Helena, Montana, and encourage all who can who can to participate in this community-wide program to help fund nonprofit that advance the common good. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana to be affixed this twenty second day of November, two thousand and twenty one. Will McCollins, Mayor, Dana Clayborne, Clerk of the Commission. Present agenda claims. Manager Hall shock.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commission. Mayor, I recommend you adopt on consent. And excuse me, not a request on consent, a motion to approve the claims between September twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty one through October twenty ninth of two thousand and twenty one for checks numbered one eight four two two eight through one eight four nine six four for a total of four million nine hundred thirty six, thirty thousand, six hundred forty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. This covers the claims from the end of September through the end of October.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of agenda item make or consent agenda item make claim.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any communications proposals from the commissioners? Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things that I consider to be keeping matters. And the first is about the first of the month, we were asked by the Goodhue family to fifteen alfalfa to reconsider the sewer connection request that they had, I believe it was the eighteenth of October. And you know, I'd offer a motion, but I can't according to the bylaws, two of the folks motion to reconsider. Two of the folks that voted on the prevailing side of that vote need to put forward that motion if we would reconsider that. So I guess I'm just just want to throw that out there and see if the commission's interested in it.
Attorney courts, then what will be the next step?
If a motion is proposed, Mr. Mayor, it would have to be seconded like Commissioner Logan suggested by one of the other commissioners who voted on the prevailing side. And then we would set it for a future agenda where you would actually discuss the item again.
Thank you. Do we know the votes?
Mr. Mayor, if I recall correctly, and somebody please correct me if I am wrong, but it was a four to one vote. I was the dissenting vote to not allow the connection to the sewer.
Just to correct, I believe it was a three to two vote, and Commissioner Logan, you and I were the dissenting votes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any seconds from the commissioners? A second it. Madam Clerk.
Actually procedurally, it requires, and then, you know, not speak with Commissioner Dean, but it requires myself, Commissioner Dean, or you and me, Mr. Mayor, or you and Commissioner Dean. Um, not, not Commissioner Logan. So two of us got to say yes tonight to even start the discussions. And historically, we've been drumming out much longer than that.
Do we have any others? All right, I guess that feels.
Mr. Mayor, the second item being a request, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
A request by a Jewel Wellborn of an historical organization that has repeatedly requested to be heard about their proposal to remove and relocate the Confederate Fountain. And I guess at this point, I'm just interested. So I guess at this point, it seems like there's enough interest in the commission to direct manager to put it on a future agenda. Or we can tell Ms. Wellborn that we're not interested. So I'm just trying to gauge the interest of the commission. Thank you.
Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I would say that I don't think that this, you know, I respect her request to get on our agenda, but I'm seeing is that she's not a constituent of the city or even a member of the state of Montana. And we have a whole lot on our on our plate in terms of priorities that we need to be addressing as a city. I think this meeting, we all know it will likely be a long one. I don't think that this is something that, you know, our meeting time is extremely valuable, and I don't necessarily think that that's a priority that we need to be spending meeting time on.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, Mayor, I would agree with Commissioner Dean. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would concur as well, Mr. Mayor. We receive requests from outside entities, including folks in Helena all the time who ask for us to discuss things or endorse things. And I don't, I don't know why this request for a monument to white supremacy garners even a discussion of this.
Thank you. All right. Do, are you done, Commissioner?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Reporter of the city attorney.
Nothing to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a couple of quick items as we move on to a busy agenda tonight. Uh, just a reminder that Friday night is the parade of lights from six to seven thirty P M. And the lighting of the fire tower has been moved to seven thirty, between seven and seven thirty. Also that there will be free parking during the holidays on specific dates. That's free parking in our blocks and on the streets for this Thursday and Friday, the twenty fifth and twenty sixth, and December twenty third and twenty fourth, and then finally December thirty first. And then last on Friday, all city offices will be closed. Uh, the transfer station will be reopened on Friday morning to its normal hours. You have any questions of me? I'll certainly answer them now, but otherwise, that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Comments or questions for the city manager? Thank you, Madam Manager. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Wilson? Is Representative Wilson present, Madam Clerk?
I, I believe so, Mr. Mayor. I've got to find her in the attendees if you'll give me just a moment.
You bet.
You have your mic, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Senator. I mean, not Senator, Mayor Collins and the city. A little nervous there. I just wanted to thank you for your time and what we're working on right now as a group is how to better uh, reach the people in our district so that when we make recommendations, we are confident that there that it's coming straight from the people in our district. So we have a proposed outreach plan that we would consider once we take up new business in January. And we're not having any meetings in December, but January twenty sixth will be the swearing in of all the new people at the civic center at seven P M. If anyone's interested in in uh, watching that. And we're also in the process of electing new officers for the new year. So that's where we're at right now. And we appreciate you giving us voice at the meetings and look forward to the continuing of the relationship. Thank you.
We have any comments or questions for Representative Wilson? Thank you. Regular. You bet. Regular items. To move or deny to approve a resolution of intention to annex into the city of Helena property described as track A on the certificate of survey filed as document number three, three, six, zero, eight, five, eight in all of blocks four, five, six, and nine of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the rights of way adjacent to the property and established conditions for annexation. Manager Holoshock, Community Developer Director Hagen and Planner Two, Michael McConnell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, this is the intention to annex in uh, what is being referred to as the west side development. And in quick summary, you'll see additionally items on the agenda this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Planner Michael McConnell, as well as our Community Development Director, Sharon Haugen. If you have any further questions, both myself and Assistant City Attorney Coat are available to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Hall shock. You have the floor, Planner McConnell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael McConnell. As you said, uh, this is the agenda item for the west side annexation. Um, I'll try to be as brief as possible to allow ample time for for discussion and for comment as well. So overall, this is a three-part project with the pre-zone and preliminary plat discussions to be heard shortly. Uh, the project site is a fifty eight acre property on the city's west side. This is just west of Hauser Boulevard and Granite Avenue intersection. Uh, the property is in the county currently with a zone district designation of urban residential mixed use. Uh, there are no use or dimensional standards associated with some with this zone district currently, um, though they will be adopted by the county at a later date. though they will be adopted by the county at a later date. The property is located in a mainly single-family residential neighborhood. And the surrounding zone districts do support that use pattern. The property will be annexed in phases, as you can see here. The development schedule plans for a new phase every other year pending approval, of course, with the final phase, Phase Four in green, being annexed and final plotted potentially in twenty twenty seven. So in order to effectively provide services to properties being annexed, a route of annexation must be established. In this case, the route of annexation is to be Hauser Boulevard, west from Granite, off of Granite Avenue, excuse me, then north on Hauser Boulevard and south on Park Drive. These pathways will provide primary access to all phases of the proposed annexation and subdivision project areas. And you can see that outlining red. All adjacent rights away will be annexed into the city as part of this project. This is in line with state law and ensures that the route of annexation is properly maintained. It is projected that up to two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine new vehicle trips per day could be added to the local transportation network as a result of this annexation. Most of the roads in the neighborhood are currently unimproved. Though as part of this annexation, Hauser Boulevard, Park Drive, and Granite Avenue from Knight Street to Hauser Boulevard will be improved to complete street standards. Provisions for these roads would include curb gutter, boulevard sidewalks, and paving to various widths. Some of you might have noticed, the two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine number is different from the, from the T A S submitted with the preliminary plot application. And that's because we use a formula for determining trip generation for annexation of cruise on projects. That is based on examples in the community of parcels with the same use district, sorry, with the same zone district designation, parcel size, use distribution, and intensity of use. It is anticipated that by the applicant, that eighty percent of those new trips generated will utilize Granite Avenue to access Highway twelve from this development. There is expected to be increases in use for both the water and wastewater systems, but no offsite upgrades were identified relating to the water system either by the applicant or staff during the internal review. The increased wastewater system loads may cause some downstream mains to exceed the seventy-five percent capacity threshold for upgrade. This will be calculated prior to annexation and final plating of each phase. And if any mains are determined to meet or exceed that threshold, they will be upgraded by the developer. And this is referenced in that preliminary plot approval condition. This property, if annexed, will be served by City Helena Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Services. Police and Fire indicated as part of the internal review that call times would likely vary based on call volume and severity. The subject property is adjacent to both water and wastewater services with the city's primary transmission main from the ten mile treatment plant running across the property from west to east. And there is a preliminary plot approval condition related to this main. All utilities associated with construction on site will be built to City of Helena engineering standards. This parcel is identified in the growth policy as having a moderate fire risk and being adjacent to City of Helena Open Lands and National Forest beyond. There is the potential for wildfire spread to this property, and you can see that in the map on your left. This impact is also being addressed with a subdivision condition. So a city's growth policy is one of the methods that staff uses to evaluate annexation applications. And the main theme of our growth policy, the recent update that we had, is for the city to grow in targeted areas with dense multi-use centers that are supported potentially by multiple residential areas. Think of the downtown, which is the leftmost dashed circle. You know, as a growth center being supported by the residential neighborhoods to the, to the east and west of it. This property isn't envisioned or recommended to be one of those multi-use centers, but rather one of the supportive neighborhoods. The growth policy does identify this area as one where urban style development or growth might be appropriate. This is reflected in the map. You'll see where the orange areas are recognized as ones that either have currently or would be appropriate for urban densities. The growth policy defines urban as moderate to high density residential uses that may include public uses such as schools, churches, open lands, and occasional commercial uses that serve the immediate area. And the immediate area, even the parts of the neighborhood currently in the county, is describing the growth policy as urban. So annexing this property would be supported by several growth policy goals and objectives that suggest the city should focus growth in areas with ready links to existing infrastructure. The urban standard boundary, which is shown on this map as, as a copper, copper type color, identifies areas where the city can easily serve, excuse me, or more easily serve properties with exist, with existing infrastructure like water and wastewater. And as you can see, this property, which is highlighted in purple, is, is within the urban standard boundary. So there has been significant public comment related to this project. Overall, around a hundred and ninety, several came in today, so I don't have an exact number, have come in for the West Side project as a whole. The majority, the majority of these comments did express criticisms identifying the density of the project, the traffic generated, pedestrian safety, or the ability of the city to serve the parcel as reasons why it should be denied. Support was also received citing the provision of housing and job growth as, as goals and reasons for support. City staff has made the materials related to this project available on the city's website include hearing information in certified letters in addition to posting signs on the property and advertising in the independent record. We are proposing several conditions of annexation. And they are that the entire Park Drive, Hauser Boulevard corridor, both in the north and south portions of those streets must be built to a minor collector complete street standards. Hauser Boulevard from Park Drive to Granite Avenue, the east-west section must be built to major collector complete street standards. Gravenet, Granite Avenue from Hauser Boulevard to Knight Street must be improved to a major collector complete street standards. That, these, these three conditions represent the improvement of the route of annexation. And the rest are standard conditions for annexations, a review of new construction for compliance with building codes, zoning codes, fire codes, et cetera, the insurance standards. Making sure the taxes and assessments are paid in current. Waving the right to protest and note being notified for special districts and making sure that the final plat conditions are satisfied. So with these conditions, we are recommending approval of a resolution of intention to annex Track A as shown on certificate survey three, three, six, zero, eight, five, eight in all blocks four, five, six, and nine of Highland Park subdivision, and the adjacent rights away into the city of Helena, Montana, and to establish conditions for annexation. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. If there are any questions for staff, we are available at this time to address those.
Thank you. Thank you, Planner McConnell. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Lothwood?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Mr. McConnell. Do you have a sense of how, going back to the, the different phases, how the applicant has talked about its decision on, you know, which, which parcels and which areas to annex in first? Or develop first, I suppose?
Sure. The applicant has submitted a development schedule that shows Phase One to be annexed and final plotted in twenty twenty-one. Phase Two in twenty twenty-three, Phase Three in twenty twenty-five, and Phase Four finally in twenty twenty-seven. As far as, sorry, as far as the specific lots, I don't have that information.
And then, Mayor, I just, I had one more question, if that's okay.
Please.
So just in your experience with annexations, you know, the, the, the various conditions that you all are recommending, are these, are these fairly standard conditions for an annexation? Or how, you know, how do these compare to how, how the cities handle previous annexations?
Sure. I, I mean, I would say they are, they are reasonable conditions given the scope of the project, right? We need to have a, a route of annexation that is improved to City of Helena standards so that, you know, fire trucks can get there, or, you know, police cruisers, ambulances, et cetera, trash trucks can all get to the site. They might not be able to if that route of annexation was not improved to city standards. There's also a pedestrian component to that, right? There's a school down the road. You know, they have to get to school safely. A lot of kids walk there. So that route needs to be improved. The conditions related to the special districts, the taxes being paid, the conditions being met, those are all family standard, yes.
Commissioner Halliday?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A question for Mr. McConnell. So with the route of annexation, and I don't know if you can pull that up on the screen, I guess first a question of sort of, is, is that something that is required by law and derived through some methodology? And sort of, depending on your answer to that, why was, for example, Stewart Street and Flowery Street, you know, coming off of the subdivision, not also identified as parts of the route of annexation?
Sure. So to answer your question, we need one route of annexation. But how the project is laid out, you have a fairly, a fairly long distance from, from north to south that needs to be provided with access. So the access really is Granite Street over to Hauser. And then Phases, Phase Four especially, takes access directly to, to Park Drive. Also, as part of the preliminary plat application, we do require two routes for proposals that denying, that don't have only a dead end street, right? So that is part of the methodology there. I hope that answers your question.
Sort of. I guess I'm curious, like, is it, is it a law or a statute somewhere that says there has to be a route of annexation identified? And that that route, right, can only be sort of that one line, like here, obviously, there's a branch off. I'm just curious whether it was possible to say that the route of annexation is going to be, you know, Granite all the way to Flowery, inclusive of, right, Flowery and Stewart as well, running, running east to west. Does that make sense?
Yes. I guess to answer your question, I don't know if there, if we can, if we can require more than one route of annexation. I know we require one. Sharon, if you could possibly speak to, to state law on that matter, that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, so if I, if I recall, I think Granite Street is already annexed into the city. And state law does require that we have some type of route of annexation that the property has to be basically adjacent, and that's generally done through a route of annexation. In the past, we've annexed property up in Country Club, used Country Club as route of annexation. Prior to this, Hauser was used as a route of annexation, Jocelyn. So could there be more than one right, route of annexation? We definitely have to have one. And so this is the one that was the most direct route of annexation for this property. I don't know, Commissioner Halliday, if that answered your question or not. Then I'd be happy to further clarify anything for you.
Yeah, that's helpful. I mean, I think it explains to me, we're looking more for legal access here as opposed to the routes identifying where that traffic's going to be going, right? As opposed to sort of a traffic impact study. I guess I was curious in that question because our some of the conditions focus on development of those, those routes, right, even say the portion of Hauser that's not directly adjacent to the proposed annexed property. So I would just wasn't sure if that's, that's something that can be conditioned for those other streets essentially as well, irrespective whether they're labeled as annexation, but maybe that's a conversation for the subdivision piece.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, you're right, it's more of a legal requirement than an indication of traffic impact, so.
And I do have other questions, Mr. Mayor, but not on that specific topic. So I'd be happy to let Commissioner Dean ask any question.
Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's not on this particular topic. Mine is more of a logistics question, and I know this is my first time since getting on the commission that we've had this kind of large project in front of us. So this first regular item, we really are, are just talking about the annexation piece and not actually talking about the, the planned development within this annexation piece. Would that be an accurate statement?
That would be, yes.
Okay, great. And then I guess I'm curious if you could maybe, and I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Leland or someone else, but I wonder if you could really talk a little bit about the impacts of annexation and our ability to sustain our, our water and wastewater systems, should this be, area be annexed?
Sure. I mean, I can tell you that no improvements were, were recommended either, either by the applicant or identified really during the review, but Ryan, if you have specific commentary on this, that would be helpful.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'll see if I can answer the question. Is if we annex this location, we do have adequate sewer capacity as far as treatment. There is going to be, you know, anywhere between two thousand and four thousand feet of sewer line down above Brady Street that needs to be upsized because it just currently does not have the capacity to handle annexation at this time. And then as far as water, we do have adequate capacity is storage within this zone. It's the High Malbum Zone that it's going to be located in. And so we have storage and we can supply water to it. We do have capacity. You know, we did get into water restrictions this year. I admit that, but it was more spreading everything out than actually having capacity. And when we're talking capacity, we're talking more of having irrigation, not necessary, not necessarily domestic. Because you're looking at between three point five million for domestic in the winter compared to fifteen million for irrigation purposes, basically in the, in the summer. So we do have capacity to be able to fly this subdivision.
Okay, that's helpful. Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a quick follow-up on the infrastructure that would eventually have to be upsized?
Please go ahead.
Mr. Leland, where, who, who does the burden to pay for that fall on? And what is the process for, and timeline, I guess, for that kind of upsizing?
Mayor, Commissioner, it is on the developer's timeline. It is not part of our capital project list or priority list. So they could wait until the city upsizes the main to be able to handle that because as we go through, some of them are six-inch lines. We bring them up to eight-inch when it comes to life of service is over. So they could wait for us, but they're not going to wait years and years for this. So it'll be the responsibility of the developer. It's conditioned and it'll be on their timeline. And it has been spelled out in phases on when they need to look at it and upsize it when it meets a 75% capacity.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I missed this, but question of who is responsible for the upgrades necessary for the affected streets?
Mayor, Commissioners, that will, sorry, Mr. Logan, do you mean?
Financially.
Conditioned to be annexed and approved?
Yes, the improvements.
Oh, that would be the applicant as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Halliday?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So maybe a sort of logistical question to, for the whole evening here, we've got a few different moves, annexation, pre-zoning, preliminary plat. And it's probably for Mr. Coe, but could you walk us through sort of the different standards and considerations you're supposed to be applying with regard to these respective decisions? I mean, I understand that the plating portion is, you know, where we've wound up in this sort of quasi-judicial phase. But I've understood from past city attorneys that zoning questions or annexation questions are quite different. And I'm just trying to understand what, what sort of criteria and reviews we're supposed to be doing on these respectively, comparable to one another.
That would be appropriate for Mr. Coe. Eric, if you, if you would jump in here?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, with respect to annexation, the considerations for the commission are, can services be provided to the property? Because there has to be services provided to a property. The city can't impose conditions. Some of those conditions are laid out in the documents that Michael has prepared for tonight's meeting. With respect to the zoning, things to be considered are, is the proposed zoning consistent with the growth plan? Is there reasonable provision for adequate light and air? What's the effect on motorized, non-motorized transportation systems? Does the suggested zoning, is it compatible with urban growth? And the character of this district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses? And does it conserve the value of the buildings around it? With respect to whether certain items are quasi-judicial or legislative, it's my understanding that in the past, the matter of annexation has been a quasi-judicial decision. Whereas pre-zoning or zoning decisions, the city has treated those as a legislative action. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Halliday?
It does. I mean, it's a deviation from the past practice. That's why I'm trying to figure out, you know, which of them are quasi-judicial, which are not. And I guess the other piece of it, and I don't think I articulated it well enough, was which of these are, you know, discretionary decisions? And which of these are specific criteria to statutory requirements, right? We've received a ton of communication, either saying, support this project because it will result in jobs and houses. We've received communications that say, don't support this project. It's going to destroy the character of the neighborhood. It's going to result in traffic near the school at too dangerous levels. You know, for which of these are, is it appropriate for commissioners to say, you know, gosh, this stuff concerns me? And for which of them are much more sort of tied in and hamstrung based on statutory constraints? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
It does. And I would say that annexation is the area in which the commission has the most discretion. When it comes to pre-zoning, zoning, subdivision approval, you have to apply or look at certain factors that are set out specifically in statute. And you have to make sure that when you're making the decision, that it has to be in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare.
That's really helpful. I mean, that's how I've always understood sort of the process, annexation being somebody coming and saying, I want to be part of your city. And you can kind of have that broadest discussion of, you know, is it appropriate to bring that land into the city? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have the applicant present? Do we have comments from the applicant?
The applicant is, is present. I do not know if they have comments or not.
On this topic, if he has comment, yes. If not, we'll move forward. So. Madam Clerk?
Can you hear us?
Oh, jeez. Yeah, we can hear you, but you have that echoing in the background, Sussex Construction. You have the floor.
Can I hear you?
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Ron Barch, and I am with Sussex Development. I also have Derek Davis, also Sussex Development. Thank you very much for your, the opportunity to speaking about this annexation, as well as the rest of this project that's in front of you today. Obviously, there's lots of parts and pieces to what you're going to be considering today. So, in the, to try to be respectful of time, I'm going to speak specifically to annexation. And, you know, why this project, we believe, should be allowed to be coming to the City of Helena. There's a lot of other parts, obviously, to this project. And I will, I will reserve those till later portions of tonight's meeting, if that's all right. Having said that, please do, if you have any questions about this, and I've gone over it, just let me know. But specific to annexation, I'm going to pull up a slide presentation here. And I'll show you a couple of things. And I'm going to keep this very brief because I do understand there's a lot of, you know, this is going to take some time this evening. So, the land that, to start off it, this land that we are considering today to be annexed into the City of Helena, it's roughly 58 acres of land that's adjacent to the City of Helena. Just to give you a really quick history, this land was owned by William White's estate. He also had owned the land that was to the south that fairly recently, you as a commission, had accepted into the City of Helena and has become part of our park system. So roughly half of the land that they owned became part of the city parks. And this is the remaining portion. The reason that we got involved in this is that this land has been identified in the Helena Growth Plan as, as land that is consistent and should be developed, you know, and become portions of, you know, for housing. The reason that, now, specific to annexation, the reason that, that this, this project is coming forward in front of you, see if I can get this to move. Sorry. So, this is the map of the area. In the Helena Growth Plan, before we started to work with this land, you know, we're very, we are very conscious of the Helena Growth Policy. There's very little land in or on the Helena area that's actually, has been scheduled for urban growth. This particular parcel of land, in addition to the parcel that was donated to the City of Helena that has become part of our park, had always been identified in that growth plan for development. And hence, that was part of the reason that we had brought it forward. I guess the, the main reasons why we, we would request this be included into the City of Helena. The pros for annexation is, is a couple. First of all, annexation to the City of Helena requires a stricter standard versus a county development. Meaning, if it becomes part of the City of Helena, the city will benefit greater. They'll have larger streets, you'll have curbs, gutters, a lot of infrastructure that typically isn't, isn't come with county development. As well as, as I already said, it's already, it has been identified on the City Growth Plan. And then, of course, the other huge advantage is, if this becomes part of the City of Helena, any houses that are built there, they'll also participate in city taxes, which is, which is contrary to what's currently happening in the, in the county. All those county houses aren't participating with city services. The cons, the reason why, why we believe this is not a good county development, first of all, is it expands upon the use of more wells and septics. That's one of the negatives. And I believe that this commission had fairly recently annexed a good portion of the West Side of Helena with the understanding that that made sense of bringing that as part of the City of Helena and eliminating some of this well and septic conflict. The other element here is urban sprawl. Obviously, the more that we get farther away from our city services, the more that we travel, we waste fuel. We encourage people to spread farther and farther away from the center. There's, and as I already explained, there's a lower infrastructure standard in the county versus the city. It creates more strain on the city services with you have these, you know, if it's a county project, these, these people that live there, they're using city services and they're not supporting those, those services. It's important to note that if this property, the last point is on the key points, number two, this isn't a county growth policy. It essentially says that, hey, if we're encouraging urban-style growth to occur in these areas, that it's more appropriate for that growth to occur in a city setting. I'm sorry. So, with that, I, I, there's, there's a lot more that goes around this project. So, again, I want to keep this very brief. Specific to annexation, if you have any questions, you know, I would appreciate if you would ask that of me. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, on, at the beginning of the meeting, I reminded the public about, you know, respecting each other, respecting the commission. And at this time, we will entertain public comments on this topic. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would ask first if you would prefer that I call upon Ms. Perry, who I believe is
Yes.
speaking on behalf of the group. I am also, have been informed that Mr. Wilson will be speaking first, along with Ms. Perry, just for process purposes.
Okay, on this, are we, are we going to be talking on this topic? If, that's why we have the public comment. I just want to remind them about it. Ms. Perry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would prefer to have our attorney, Mr. Kim Wilson, speak first, if possible. And I would follow his comments.
Mr. Wilson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Collins and Commissioners, my name is Kim Wilson. I'm an attorney with Morrison Sherwood Wilson Diola. I'm here tonight representing Save Helena West Side. We had submitted a detailed comment letter to the commission last week addressing all aspects of this subdivision. We had understood that tonight's hearing would be a joint hearing and with about all aspects at once. Understanding now that we're taking them one by one with public comment on each one, we will try to parse our comments out for each of the four decisions before you, annexation, zoning, pre-zoning, rather, variances and subdivision. Know, however, that these issues all overlap and Save Helena West Side opposes all four motions before you. At this, as this is a threshold issue, the annexation, and as described by Mr. McConnell, it encompasses a lot of the issues you'll see elsewhere tonight, including application of the growth policy, transportation issues, issues with the school. You'll probably hear quite a few comments during this first section of the hearing. And members of Save Helena West Side and others in the neighborhood will, will, will fill you in on their concerns, their substantial concerns with this project. You'll also be hearing from our traffic engineer, Joey Stazak, detailing a number of shortcomings with the TIS and traffic issues related, which again, I would note that Mr. McConnell discussed in some, some detail in his presentation. So I believe Mr. Stazak will be responding to that. I will save my comments. I'm going to speak briefly on this annexation issue. And then I will reserve a little bit of time for each of the specific hearings after that. Speaking specifically to the annexation, growth policy, Helena Growth Policy cautions to avoid annexation of undeveloped land until all public facilities are adequate to serve the new development or an infrastructure plan is in place to assure that such facilities will be provided when needed. This goal of the growth policy, I think aptly sets the tone for a lot of the comments that you'll be hearing tonight. Citizens are concerned with the transportation facilities that are not adequate to serve the subdivision and that have already created problems at the bottleneck by Kessler School. I'll let others speak to that issue and those issues in more detail. We believe that this development, that development in Helena should not outpace the infrastructure. And for that reason, we would urge you to deny the annexation request. And as I say, I'll reserve my other comments for each of the other hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Perry?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. So, I represent Save Helena West Side, which is a group that was organized out of incredibly widespread concerns about the traffic issues in our neighborhood and the impacts that this proposed development would have, not only on our neighborhood, but the Kessler School community. And we don't disagree with what the developer presented, that the area for this proposed subdivision makes sense within, you know, the, the bounds set forth for ideal growth for the city. We're not against development in general. And we know that it's desperately needed in our community. But the site for the new development has to be able to reasonably accommodate the density and the impact that will follow. As our attorney, Mr. Wilson, just pointed out, that is part of the consideration for annexation. And so this afternoon, we submitted to you a petition signed by over 300 members of not only our neighborhood, but also the Kessler School community. And in it, we stated that, that, that to ensure safe and sustainable growth, development cannot outpace infrastructure, nor can it be at the expense of public health and public safety. Commissioner Halliday clarified that public health and public safety need to be taken into consideration before deciding about annexation of a property. And for that reason, at this point, we're asking you to deny annexation of this piece of land because the infrastructure that's existing right now and the infrastructure proposed for improvement just simply cannot safely handle it. The staff report for this agenda item talks about the proposal aligning with city policies and codes. But you're going to hear in the comments this evening that that's not entirely true. The proposal violates a number of items in your own growth policy, city code, long-range transportation plan, as well as the city's 2013 engineering standards. And we ask that you give consideration to those violations. Because of our significant concerns, as a neighborhood, we hired Joey Stazak, which you'll hear from soon. And he found 18 critical concerns, errors, and deficiency in the traffic impact study. We submitted that letter to you. errors and deficiency in the traffic impact study. We submitted that letter to you. Um, and we, I'll let Joey speak to the specifics of it. Um, but I want to kind of set the stage here for you to understand where we as a neighborhood are coming from. Granite's already congested. Um, and the additional traffic is going to be a threat to public safety of neighborhood members, pedestrians, uh, motor vehicles, as well as Kessler students. On the far west side of Helena, um, and I think I was supposed to be able to share my screen. I'm not able to pull it up here, but if I could, I would show you um, that Granite is, um, let's see, maybe I
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Ms. Perry will be rejoining as a panelist, so she may share her screen.
Okay, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm sharing, sharing a map here, um, and it's similar to one that was already shared. You'll see where that V of Hauser and Park Avenue on the far left side, they form kind of a, a V to that's, or a I guess kind of an arrow pointing aside. There's a large open area with trails. I'm not sure that I can point it out, but hopefully you're seeing that's where the proposed development would go. And what I'm showing highlighted in kind of oranges, yellow here is where our neighborhood has access to Euclid Avenue and Highway twelve. And primarily, that's going down Granite, past Kessler School, you can see there, um, to the side of, to the, I guess, the east there of Granite by Euclid. Um, and so Granite Avenue is really the only connection to Highway twelve for what would be about six city blocks if we, if we kind of highlighted it out before getting over to Hiawatha there. Um, we're looking at six city blocks wide of Granite Avenue uh that are only connecting to Highway twelve at Granite Avenue. And if you contrast that to the layout as you move towards town, every block you have a new access point to Highway twelve. So Granite Avenue is already serving as the primary access point to Highway twelve for several more times the homes than any of the other city streets connecting to Highway twelve to the east. Um, and this is indicated in many of the comments sent by our um, our neighborhood members that Granite is just, we need more access to Highway twelve. We had hoped for additional access to the west with this proposed development. Um, the developer is saying that that is not possible, but yet still thinking that it's safe to add a bunch more houses. Um, the developer is estimating fourteen hundred additional vehicle trips per day on an already problematic section of Granite um Avenue. Um, if you look at what's allowable by zoning, it could actually be up to twenty eight hundred additional vehicle trips per day. And all of that traffic is going to be added to the existing residential streets. So I want you to think of, um, you know, some of that truly devastating news that we've been reading about in um this year with forest fires, the Paradise, California fire in particular. So now imagine a rapidly moving forest fire coming from all the open land that we have to the south and west of our neighborhood. And then everyone trying to evacuate out Granite Avenue in a timely manner. As you know, fires can move quickly. They can throw embers up to half a mile ahead of the fire itself. So how are these hundreds of existing homes plus an additional set, a hundred and seventy-seven new homes going to evacuate Granite safely while emergency vehicles are trying to enter on Granite? And if school was in session, you would also have hundreds of parents trying to pick up their children at Kessler Elementary. How does that fulfill the city's growth policy objective to maintain public health and public safety as high priorities? We realize Helena needs more houses, but it cannot, development cannot outpace infrastructure and it absolutely cannot be at the expense of public safety. We ask that you deny the annexation of this property, um, as the infrastructure is currently proposed, does not um provide or does not ensure that our neighborhood will be able to remain safe. It does not align with the city's growth policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Perry? Comments or questions from the commission? Do you have a, uh, comments, uh, rebuttal from the applicants?
Miss, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in real quickly, I know that there were several other individuals that were hoping to make public comment, uh, and hats raised.
Okay, please call the second person or the third person then.
Okay, uh, so next, I believe the, uh, we have Joey Stazak. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, that was going to speak on behalf of the group.
You have the floor, Joey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Joey Stazak. I'm a senior traffic engineer and associate at Sanderson Stewart, located here in Bozeman, Montana. Um, I was hired by Save Mon- Helena West Side to do professional independent review of the traffic study for the West Side development. Ms. Perry highlighted that I summarized my complete review in a letter, which was submitted to the Community Development Office in June. And then again, in October, after the updated traffic study was submitted by the applicant. The letter outlines eighteen items in the traffic study that are both inaccurate or missing in the analysis and was again submitted prior to this meeting for all of you to review. I wanted to touch on a few items which sparked my concern in my review and reiterate the need for these critical items to be addressed for this annexation request and later in the public hearing items for the subdivision on tonight's agenda. So I just want to talk quick minute about traffic volumes. That was, was highlighted in Mr. McConnell's presentation. The basis of most analyses and traffic impact studies start with gathering existing traffic counts to represent an accurate depiction of existing conditions on intersections and roadway corridors. The first reference to traffic volumes in the applicant's TIS was reusing traffic counts from twenty seventeen at the intersection of Granite and Euclid. And then use a half a percent yearly growth rate to scale up those twenty seventeen volumes to existing volumes. The first concern was, at the time, Granite Avenue was under construction and likely reduced volumes in the area. A second concern would be traffic data obtained from the same MBT traffic counter now shows a nineteen percent growth rate from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, which equates to approximately three and a half percent yearly growth rate, which is seven times the applicant's used number. In the second reference to traffic, the applicant counted Granite Avenue in August of twenty twenty without applying a COVID adjustment factor, which is readily available from MBT. For this specific data counts, MBT provided a nine percent statewide reductions in counts based on COVID. Another concern was that Kessler School was not in session at the time of those traffic counts. The third round of cities requested TIS comments, the applicants counted the intersection of Granite and Overlook, which was May of twenty twenty-one, to evaluate a pedestrian study at the intersection. A quick call to Kessler School noted that only a hundred and sixty of the two hundred and sixty-five normal students were in enrollment on that specific day. The fourth round of cities requested traffic study revisions, the applicant noted to validate previous counts, but no data was provided for reference. One can easily see the accuracy of depicting, the existing conditions can be lost in the details of several revisions on revisions to the traffic study using counts from three different years. But one simple example would show the applicant estimated sixteen hundred daily trips on Granite Avenue, which is classified as a major collector. Updating those numbers with the current growth rate, as noted previously, appropriate adjustment factors, school in session, and no construction traffic in the area, I am estimating existing volumes on Granite Avenue could be in the range of four thousand vehicles per day. Adding the twenty-three hundred daily west side trips coming from both the traffic study and the zoning potential puts that future volume on Granite Road above the five thousand vehicle per day maximum, which is noted in the Helena Engineering Design Standards for a Safe and Operational Roadway. This quick estimate alone should endorse the call to update the traffic study with new counts for all intersections collected now with school in session and the amount of growth this area has witnessed the past four years. A final note to put all this into perspective is this is all happening in the doorsteps of Kessler School that already has noted safety problems with pedestrian and vehicle conflicts, limited pickup drop off areas and pedestrian facilities to the adjacent neighborhoods. The applicant's traffic study and revisions to the traffic studies did not address any crash summary or safety analysis of the school impacts for either existing or future scenarios. The purpose of a traffic impact study is to provide valuable information to city staff, advisory boards, and all of you on the commission to help make an informed decision on community development based on the health, safety and welfare of the public user. In my professional capacity, I do not believe this information is provided to you from what the applicant offers and should be revisited before any phase of the development is constructed. An updated traffic study could perhaps validate some of the elements of the applicant's analysis, or perhaps it would show that a traffic signal at Euclid and Granite is needed today or that Granite Avenue can't handle the development's volumes and it needs to be reduced, even if safety concerns adjacent to the schools deem that traffic volume increases on Granite are detrimental to pedestrian traffic. Again, all eighteen of my items from my independent review are summarized in detail and was provided to the Community Development Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stazak. Madam Clerk?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next I have Forrest Zimmerman, excuse me.
You have the floor, Mrs. Zimmerman.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, I want to just briefly reinforce that the, uh, this is a matter of infrastructure not being in place for the annex, for the amount of annexation of fifty-eight acres as uh that will be zoned R two and R three as proposed by the developer. Uh, the area being ripe for development is not disputed. It is a good area to develop in some capacity as long as it does not outpace infrastructure. I think we've clearly heard several things that demonstrate its outpacing infrastructure, including the information submitted um by the city of twenty-eight hundred and sixty-nine new vehicle trips today on Granite. And there will be other issues I'll be coming on later, other, in more specific detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next, uh, I have Jessie Herbert Meany.
You have the floor, Ms. Herbert Meany, uh, Jessie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jessie Herbert Many. I'm at two five two two Woodward and I, um, I want to echo the, the comments that have been given by the Save Helena West Side group. Um, of course, I understand the need for future growth and development in the area. However, I am extremely concerned about the traffic impacts that the proposed subdivision would have on the neighborhood and request that you deny annexation for the West Side subdivision as it's proposed. Um, I have two children, one who's a current student of Kessler School and one who will be attending Kessler next year. Um, the current traffic in the area and the congestion at the intersection of Granite and Euclid are at current levels that I believe are already unacceptable, to the point that I don't really feel comfortable allowing them to walk to their neighborhood school by, through Granite, um, even though we're just really a few blocks away. Uh, the increase in the traffic will create hazardous conditions and put public health and safety at risk for the children at the school and for the Helena community members, both current and future. Um, development, as we've heard, development cannot outpace infrastructure and the proposed plan does not adequately provide safe and convenient pedestrian walkways. And thus, it doesn't align with the city's policies and plan. Uh, in chapter six of the City of Helena's growth plan, it states that safe and convenient pedestrian facilities are essential for children and persons with mobility limitation or without access to a motor vehicle. And the proposed plan doesn't, does not provide these. Um, girls, okay. Uh, the developer and city staff are also proposing additional bump outs at the crosswalks by Kessler as a way to increase safety. Um, but however, the city's long-range transportation plan has already identified the existing bump outs as hazard and um the city plans to cut it back by five feet, so it would seem contradictory to propose more bump outs. Um, if they might also eventually need to be cut back as well. Uh, thank you for your time and I request that you deny annexation as for the proposed plan.
Thank you, Jessie. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, next I have Kathy Burwell.
You have the floor, Ms. Burwell.
Okay, I think I'm on here.
Yes, you are.
Mister, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I'm Kathy Burwell, the Helena Area Chamber of Commerce. And uh, we're here to express our support for the proposed uh Highland Park's West Side uh community development. Helena is in dire need of additional housing to meet the needs of our quickly growing community. With just three hundred homes built in the Helena area last year, we are not meeting the demand. Not having enough affordable homes is driving the prices of our current market up tremendously. And the proposed development will um address the affordability factor. Having multiple sizes and options within this development will meet some of this ever-growing need in our c- community. And it's estimated that we need four to six hundred new homes per year in the Helena area to meet the pace of the demand. We support this development with the caveat that it's designed and constructed to meet all applicable city codes. The city and county have designated areas of, for growth and this development is within that area. We hope that the process to get developments moving and approved will be expedited to help developers get these homes built soon. More availability will help address the workforce needs of our city and county businesses. And the chamber urges you to support the development of appropriately designed, safe new neighborhoods to help with one of the biggest needs in our community, affordable housing and more of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burwell. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have Stacy Colette from Helena Public Schools.
You have the floor, Ms. Colette.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, first of all, I would like to state on behalf of Helena Public Schools that we support planned city development that supports additional housing and families in the Helena community. And we support West Side development and growing our community in a smart and economical way. Um, I submitted a letter earlier this, uh, this afternoon to the commission uh for consideration. In essence, um, we've been in conversations with Sussex Development and with our uh parent teacher organization with the similar interest to ensure that we have a safe and um clear way to provide safety for students and for our families who are accessing Kessler School. Um, the proposed subdivision with noted commission, with the noted conditions sent to the city, as well as the commitments noted below in my letter, support our interest in maintaining a safe and pedestrian-friendly school community. In collaboration with Sussex, we believe the improvements noted in the development, development conditions, as well as the commitment to ensure construction, traffic avoids school zones, including Granite during the school, during the school year meets our interest. The additional agreements that we have with Sussex include, first of all, the continued assessment of traffic volume throughout the development process. Second, the widening of Granite Street between Knight and Hauser, including additional sidewalks all the way from Hauser to Kessler School. This includes additional lighting from Hauser down to Granite, all the way to Kessler School funded through either the city or through Sussex. Fourth, adding a crosswalk at Hauser and Granite. Adding flashing lights, noting speed and pedestrian crossings at both Overlook and Hauser, Knight, where the trail intersects with Granite from the subdivision, and in accordance with the city program. Ongoing conversations in collaboration with Montana Department of Transportation focused on pedestrian and bike crossing options across Euclid, including the exploration of a pedestrian bridge and overpass are things that Sussex agreed to be in, in collaboration with us. And lastly, continuing conversations uh with the county on the Knight pedestrian path for students coming from the eastern part of the district. We believe that um with those additional considerations to a more focused pedestrian-friendly environment would be in, so we would be in support of the de- development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colette. And I want to remind the public that uh we have received a, a lot of your comments. And I for one have, I've read almost all of them, and I'm sure the commissioners have done the same. So in the interest of time, if you did submit a comment, please, we know that, um, you know that your comment has hit us and is within the, the records. Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more hand raised uh at this time. Uh, I will also need to read some written comment into the record uh after we finish
Yes.
raised hands. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Uh, next I have Dennis Parman.
You have the floor, Mr. Parman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Dennis Parman, uh, I live at twenty-seven fifty Knight Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Dennis Parman, uh, I live at twenty-seven fifty Knight Street. Um, I, I bring a little different perspective to the conversation in that. I've lived in the neighborhood for over a decade and I have over forty years of experience with public education. Particularly around, uh, community schools and, uh, circumstances like we're seeing. Here that are being visited about. I, I was, um, actually in hearten to hear the comments provided by the Helena Public Schools representative. Um, the, the one caveat that I would have is that has to be done in advance. Uh, and I, and I think you've heard some comments, uh, similar to that. Uh, when, when I travel around in this community, um, my wife worked at Kessler for a number of years, just two blocks from her home. Um, and I, I put my experience of working around public schools and, uh, having public safety in and outside of those schools. Um, at the forefront every single day. A- and then I consider the numbers of, uh, uh, of additional traffic on Granite. It, it personally is unfathomable to me, um, that, that safety, um, really. I- is going to be in place unless some of the mitigating, um, proposals that we just heard of are in, in place in advance. To, to grow into those, um, it, it would be, it would be the setting for a tragic error in judgment. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I probably will have more comments this evening, but I will close there for now.
Thank you, Mr. Parman. Madam Clerk, would you read your comments, please?
I apologize, uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have one more hand raised. Uh, Edward Santos. I would ask anyone that's wanting to make public comment on the matter of annexation, please raise your hand now so that I. I'm aware of when we are through all of those comments. Thank you.
You have the floor, Mr. Santos.
Yes, thank you. Um, so my name's Ed Santos. I live on twenty-five thirty Flowery Street. I have, I have many issues with the subdivision plan, but obviously time, you know, won't allow me to voice all my concerns. But I want to emphasize that I am for developing the site, but I'm not for the current plan as presented. So I, I live at twenty-five thirty, as I stated, Flowery Street. It's a dirt road that borders a subdivision. Currently, the block of Flowery that I live services three homes. The commission has touched on the roads that will be annexed and who pays for the upgrades. But it sounds like the developer will pay, which the developer will pay for, those roads being Granite, Park and Hauser. But a Flowery Street road will be impacted, but it's not improved as Park and Hauser Street will be. And I'm fearful that it will fall under us, the three or actually four, um, landowners. Uh, lot owners to be, to pay for that. So, um, that's a big concern of mine. Um, the proposed subdivision as planned has Flowery Street continue and eventually dead end. Um, the additional section of Flower Street will, will funnel into those, um, proposed residences. An additional potential forty residences or more down this section of road. Um, with that kind of usage, the road will definitely need to be upgraded. So basically I'm asking for smart development without dead end streets. Uh, as, as the city has demanded from other subdivisions, for example, Reader's Village was built on a steep hillside. Uh, it doesn't have dead ends. Nob Hill was built on a very steep hillside. Uh, and they don't have any dead end streets on their residential zoned areas there. Um, so this subdivision should also conform to the rules and laws, specifically City Code Section twelve-four-two E. That those developers had to abide by, this developer should also abide by. I ask that the city commission deny this subdivision for reasons addressed by Save the Helena West Side and for reasons myself and that my neighbors have stated here. Let me be clear, deny this plan, make the developer come back with a better plan. That addresses traffic, safety and keeping in with the Helena West Side feel so that it is a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Madam Clerk.
Uh, next, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have Andrea Allen.
You have the floor, Mrs. Allen.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners and all of the attendees to our meeting. I really appreciate your time this evening. My family lives on Flowery Street at twenty-five twenty-four Flowery and we used to live on Sussex Court. I'm greatly concerned about the impact of the new residential development on our, on our west side. Many issues arise, but one of the most important issues to me is the safety of our residents living on Flowery Street and in the west side area. The new increase in the traffic from the new houses and apartments will negatively impact our current residents. As well as the many people who enjoy walking along our quiet street. There are currently four homes, as Mr. Santos had stated, on our street that regularly use this, this short dirt road. If we add upwards of fifty homes, that could add at least one hundred more one-way trips on our street every single day. I'm also concerned about the ad traffic that this project will bring to Kessler Elementary School, as other people have stated as well. The drop off area of the school is already quite congested and dangerous and the school has no plans on changing their drop off plan. I can imagine what adding a large construction project to that area will do for the safety of our kids and our parents at that place. I have also personally experienced safety hazards with my children when Sussex Construction had projects near our previous home on Sussex Court. Frequently, the large vehicles and construction machines would take up much of the street and make it quite difficult to see around and drive around. Them as well as walk or play in area. While we lived on Sussex Court from the fall of two thousand and seven to the spring of twenty nineteen. I personally called Ron Barst repeatedly to ask him and his employees to be more conscientious of how they drove and behaved in our area. For the sake of the safety of the many children. We had multiple close calls with the safety of our children near our home due to the many construction projects. At the time, there was probably two houses being built at the same time. With this new project, we know there will be quite a bit more, which will increase the impact. Furthermore, the city traffic engineer, Mark Young, recommended that the developer pave Flowery Street. In order to mitigate the significant impact that the new increase in traffic would bring, as stated by a term Rob Farisolson. I believe the cost of this paving should be shouldered by the developer as well. As some of the residents on our street have already paid to be annexed and shouldn't be, uh, have an added cost built onto us. I really appreciate your time and I would urge all of you to think deeply and quite considerably about your vote that you're going to. To go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Madam Clerk.
Next, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have Cory Chinowith.
You have the floor, Cory.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, uh, Commissioners. My name is Cory Chinowith. I live at twenty-six thirty Knight Street. Um, I have lived in, in Helena my, my entire life. Uh, my mom has lived in her, her, in Helena her entire life. Um, and I say that because we are, we're vested members of the Helena community. Um, I've lived at this residence for nearly twelve years now. And one of the things I would like to bring up that perhaps we haven't talked about yet is the impact on Knight Street. So I live, it, it. When you see the map, there's a real sharp S curve in the middle of Knight Street and when you compare that to phase one. Of, of the plat there, um, it, you'll see that that is going to be a major route. Um, for folks, um, coming in and, and leaving the new development. And, and our group on Knight Street, just in our little, in our two blocks. Um, I count twenty-two kids that currently attend Helena's school. So twenty-two kids. And in a two-block linear street. Um, and we are very much of, uh, a front yard community. Uh, meaning that, um, lots of baseball games, lots of, um, uh. Sidewalk chalk murals in the area. Uh, we have block parties, um, street hockey games. And, and things like that. It, it's, it's an amazing community right now. And, and, and Knight Street and then also overlook our very narrow streets with very sharp S curves. In there and I think that it'll probably be addressed further into the meeting. Um, but, but that is an incredibly dangerous, um, area and I would. Strongly encourage you guys to all, um, vote against this. Um, thank you very much. This is my first time speaking in the commission. I apologize for being nervous. Uh, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chinowith. We didn't know you were nervous. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the last hand I have raised, uh, on this item is, uh, for Eve Byron.
Did you say the last hand?
The last hand I have raised.
Okay. You have the floor, Ms. Byron.
Well, I thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission Members. My name is Eve Byron and I live at the intersection of Hauser and Granite. Uh, I assume that I will be most impacted by the traffic generated by this subdivision. I want you to know that I am not opposed to the, the development per se. My concerns instead are focused on safety and the amount of traffic that will be generated by the subdivision. The current traffic plan means my quiet gravel road will become a major arterial. Not only will that generate additional traffic on Hauser west of Granite. But it also will add hundreds of vehicle trips per day on Hauser between Granite and Benton. What mitigation will take place for that? As part of that, Hauser has no sidewalks from Henderson to Granite. And very few curb cuts. I see walkers every time I use this stretch of the road. So will the developer install sidewalks on that stretch of road between Hauser or Henderson and Granite? Um, and if not, will you force the property owners on that stretch to install sidewalks and bring the streets up to code? Based upon the impacts of this new development. Uh, right now, the corner of Granite and Hauser is a school bus stop. And again, that will be the major arterial. How will the developer mitigate that impact to the children and the schools? Um, this brings me to my final point. Both MDT and the developers say they can't install the main access to the, the development off of Euclid. MDT also said that it couldn't slow traffic in front of four Georgians from forty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Until a child was struck and killed by a vehicle. Suddenly the speed limit was lowered. MDT also said it couldn't build the Custer Inter- interchange off of I fifteen because it was too close to the Cedar exit. The city and county put pressure on MB DT and voila, there's now a Custer Avenue interchange. MDT is in the business of moving traffic, but in light of the addition of hundreds of vehicles in front of Kessler School. It's probably a good idea to one, slow down the traffic and two, install a light at Granite and Euclid. And three, move the entrance to the subdivision further to the west to alleviate any additional hazard to children. Let's not wait for another child to die going to or from school to make these safety changes. This is a half-baked proposal that shouldn't be approved until these major traffic concerns are addressed. Don't try to redesign this at the eleventh hour. Send it back to the developer for re- revisions. And then have them bring it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byron. Madam Clerk, would you read your letters?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'd like to make a note that these, uh, comments are specific to this item. There have been other additional public comments. But we will address those on general public comment as they are not related to specific agenda items. So first I have Shannon Eckert. I oppose the West Side subdivision as the proposed plat will place homes directly above my home that looks straight into my backyard. And provide visibility into my home. I originally built my home there as a, it was a high degree of privacy and this will completely take away all privacy. Um, next I have an individual only listed as James. Do not support the West Side annexation. Ninety-four single-family homes does not meet the growth policy for dense urban centers. Jen Baker, of the traffic concerns that were raised by the public in the city planning meeting on West Side subdivision last month. Are any addressed in the annexation recommendations here? Shannon Eckert, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine additional trips directly in front of the school and accessing the highway without a stoplight. This seems to be a high risk for children at the school and for traffic on the highway. Galen Mac McAllister, personally, I have no objection to annexation or development, but great objections on the current plan put forth by Sussex. The developer's plan bluntly put does not account for the health and safety of the citizens of Helena. With traffic impacts being my number one concern. Should this project move forward, whether as planned or hopefully under the improved plan, annexation is a means of enforcing standards. Higher than those of development if under the county. I therefore favor annexation. Once the developer submits a revised plan addressing na- negative impacts inherent in the current plan. Annexation prior to correcting these negative impacts is premature. Galen McAllister, two-six-nine-two, Overlook Boulevard. Uh, next, um, additional comment from, uh, Mr. McAllister. Bear in mind that Overlook Boulevard currently serves over a hundred and seventy separate housing units, all of which must reach US twelve via Granite. At Knight and the subdivision and it's quite the mess. Additionally, I have comment from, uh, Paul Lund. My name is Paul Lund. I reside at twenty-six-ten Knight Street. I request that the commissioners deny annexation under the current proposal. For reasons addressed in the meeting today, there are clear safety concerns in relation to road infrastructure and traffic. The developer mentioned in a previous city meeting that this land has access to Highway twelve. I would encourage the developer to work with the state of Montana in creating that access, which would allow for safe access in and out of the subdivision. For evacuation and for access of emergency vehicles. Mandy Needham, what is the definition of affordable housing in the context of the comments earlier? How will it be assured the new subdivision will include affordable housing? Mary Ann Hibbard, I live in, I lived in Helena nearly my entire life and have seen many subdivisions go in. Some annexed into the city, but most have not. Every time the city denies an annexation, it forces the developer to do the development without the oversight of the city. Not to mention the city will not capture taxes from a subdivision that is right next to the city. Not only will this subdivision add much-needed housing for our growing community. But we have an opportunity to work with a developer who truly cares about our community and doing things right. I encourage you to approve the annexation and be a part of overseeing a much-needed development. Mayor and Commissioners, that is all I have in written comment on this item.
Thank you. Anybody comments from the applicant? You have the floor, Sussex Construction.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as I stated at the beginning of this section of what we're considering tonight of annexation. Uh, there are some very valid concerns that the community has and they brought up in this testimony. However, we do have quite a bit of inver- information about the traffic and the studies. And a lot of the information that they have raised. However, I was saving that for the next section under. Under subdivision and under zoning because it was more applicable in that area. If, if allowing this property to be annexed, it does not automatically create an impact. It's the next sections of zoning and subdivision. Where the vehicle trips and the generations i- is, is an appropriate conversation. So again, I was trying to break this up for you, but of course I understand it's a co- complicated issue. However, if we would like to discuss about the, those elements regarding transportation. Um, I would really would like the opportunity of making that presentation. Um, and so therefore I offer the question to you, if you would like, I can go ahead and start talking to that. Or if you believe that this question of annexation. You know, and then we will get to transportation and the rest of these concerns is appropriate. I would just as soon leave those till the next section. But I guess that would be my comment toward you or the, the opportunity to ask those questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor, Sussex Construction. If you want to address it, please.
Um, well then, let me just touch on this briefly. Um, as far as transportation goes. Um, first of all, there are valid concerns that the public has brought forward. In fact, most of the comments relating to our project, um, are related to transportation and the safety. As, uh, the, the school board has testified, we've been in continued con- conversations and working with the school board. On making certain we address. on making certain way addressing those concerns. As well, working closely with the city of Helena and their experts in tra, in transportation. We have continually modified the conditions as well as the plans that have come forward to you so that we specifically address safety, transportation and the traffic. Unfortunately, any house, any project that's built next to existing houses uh, it creates an impact and I appreciate that and that's a challenge, of course. Having said that, those impacts can be mitigated. The plans that are in front of you that are conditioned are specifically designed to address those impacts so that they meet state and city statute. We do want these to be safe roads. We will be improving these roads beyond where they are today. And unfortunately, a lot of the comments that I read specifically were geared towards the present condition of safety concerns. And that's prior to us even being there. What, with the plans that are presented and the conditions that are proposed, there will be greater walkability with sidewalks that currently do not exist. Roads that are currently very narrow, that will be widened, curbing gutters, increasing the safety aspect of all of these roads. We are pledging to continuing to work with the school board to continue to add additional measures as are appropriate. It's also very important to understand this is a phased development. One of the conditions that has come forward specifically is that as each phase comes online, if this project was to be approved, we would revisit the impact to public health and safety and the appropriateness of what the road structure is. At those times, as this incremental increase is added to this infrastructure, we will be continually monitoring what that impact is. And you as a Commissioner or your future Commissioners will have the opportunity to modify those plans. I, again, this whole conversation of traffic, we have specialists that are very knowledgeable in this arena. I am not. Um, the city of Helena has an entire staff that has reviewed this. And the city of Helena in, in respect to annexation is recommending approval of this plan and bringing this property into the city of Helena with the caveat of adding necessary conditions of approval, therefore ensuring the safety, ensuring that these elements that the public has addressed, has raised are addressed. Um, thank you very much. Derek has something as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commission. This is Derek Davis with Sussex Development. Um, I just wanted to point out a couple other things uh, that were brought up during the public comment. Um, as Ron mentioned, um, sure, the infrastructure isn't there right now, but as this project is annexed in phases, those conditions, you know, catch up with the phases and stay ahead of the phases infrastructure-wise. Um, and those conditions were developed by the city staff. Um, there was some discussion about the trips per day. And to clarify and feel free to correct me, city staff, if I speak out of turn here, but our traffic study was based on the number of units proposed and the city's traffic study and conditions are based on the zoning. And, and you know, the, the trips per day that the zoning creates is roughly twice as much as, as what we're proposing for the units here. And those conditions of approval, once again, are based off the city's analysis of the traffic and zoning. And tha, that's all I had to say there. Um, I think Jeremy Fadness with WWC Engineering would like to speak a little bit more, if that's all right.
Go ahead, Jeremy. Jeremy, you have the floor. Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I am looking for Jeremy. Currently, I don't know if it's possible for him to raise his hand. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeremy. You have your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, for your time tonight. Um, we all know that this is a hot issue uh, in the city of Helena and in, in the state of Montana in general. The development of property and the need for additional housing throughout the state. Um, we appreciate city staff's work on this project. And just wa, again, want to reiterate what Derek said, that you have your own experts in-house, including uh, traffic engineers that have reviewed uh, this development, has, have reviewed staff reports and um, have developed conditions of approval that they feel uh, a, address the impacts of this development. Um, I just want to hit on a few of the comments. Um, there are several comments um, that indicate the applicant should try to access Highway twelve and Euclid Avenue at the northwest part of the project. Um, access in this area is not feasible based on several issues. First off, MDT was contacted in July of twenty twenty-one to specifically request a review of whether or not MDT would allow access at that location. MDT provided a response on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one that said they would not allow an approach at that location due to poor site distance at the location that would cre, create potential hazard, safety hazards. Second, we've looked at the construction of an approach at this location and due to the existing fifty-foot plus road cut that is created by Highway twelve at that location, we would be looking at a seventy-two-foot road cut through the subdivision in order to construct roads that meet city of Helena standards. Therefore, it's, at this time, it's not feasible to really construct an approach to Highway twelve at that location. Uh, second thing I'd like to highlight is that based on uh, traffic counts, traffic analysis, there's really two peak times that I think that are important to discern uh, with traffic, with the traffic volumes. Um, the peak times for the subdivision do not coincide with the peak times for the school. The, the, the peak times for the subdivision uh, are seven forty-five AM and four thirty PM, uh, seven forty-five AM in the morning and four thirty PM in the afternoon. The school peak traffic occurs at eight fifteen AM and three fifteen PM. So that, what that indicates is that people that are going to work in the morning are not leaving for work at the same time children are being dropped off and vice versa. Kids are leaving school prior to people coming home from work. So these peak volumes from the subdivision do not coincide with the peak volumes for the school. Um, another issue that's been raised is the indication that the West Side and the West Side subdivision only have one access point and that is Granite Street and Highway twelve. That's not accurate. As you've seen from several maps, in fact, there are multiple ways for traffic to exit the West Side in general, as well as the West Side subdivision. There, um, as required by subdivision regulations, we have multiple points of egress from the development, four in total. And here, yep, here's a map that you can see. So you can see from this map, this is an expanded view from the proposed West Side subdivision to the east. And you can see that there's multiple routes of egress in the case of emergency um, that would allow people to disperse onto existing city streets um, to access Highway twelve to the, to the east at many locations. So the other, the other question uh, or the other comment that was raised during the review was there were some questions on traffic collection for the project being completed during COVID and school shutdowns in twenty twenty. Based on this, we went out and actually did additional traffic counts in Octo, on October twelfth through October fourteenth of twenty twenty-one to determine if the data collected in twenty twenty was accurate. We found that the data collected in October of twenty twenty-one was very similar to that collected in twenty twenty and the data collected by MDT in two thousand seventeen. Based on this, there's no reason to conclude at this time, the background data used in the TIS for this project is inaccurate. And the updated data was submitted with comment responses to the TIS, uh, thirty, third-party comments as public comment. So hopefully that information was provided to the commission. Finally, I really wanted to state that um, the, the trap, there's been some comments on a traffic signal at the intersection of Granite and Highway twelve. Um, the TIS did a signal warrant analysis based on MDT analysis done in two thousand eighteen. That was updated with city staff on that analysis. And the conditions of approval reflect a, a, at each phase, an updated traffic study that will have to be completed with, prior to each phase of the development. And we will have to util, or work with MDT uh, for potential placement of a traffic signal at Highway twelve and Granite Street. Once a traffic signal is warranted for that intersection based on traffic, the, the developer will work with MDT be, to get approval of that traffic signal. Since Highway twelve is an MDT route, MDT will have to approve a traffic signal at that location. And then finally, there were some comments on Flowery. Um, we, we definitely understand the concerns utilize, uh, with traffic utilizing some of the other streets in the area. Um, although we can't, we can't guarantee the traffic will not use other streets that are, uh, that are existing in the area. Um, we can say with certainly that we've looked at this. Um, it is actually a longer distance to go from Flowery to down Flowery to Granite Street and then down Granite Street to Highway twelve, or to, excuse me, to the Hauser Granite Street intersection than it is to go down Park Drive to the Hauser Granite Street intersection. Plus, with this project and the conditions of approval that are presented to the commission, Park Street will be paved with curb and gutter and sidewalks. Um, whereas Flowery Street will not be paved with curb and gutter and sidewalks. And therefore, typically, traffic utilizes the path of least resistance. They're going to use the paved route that's shorter to get to where they need to go. So it is our opinion that very few traffic uh, from this development will utilize Flowery or other streets in the area. They will use the routes that have been identified by city staff and uh, WWC and the applicant as their routes to access uh, other areas of the city. Uh, with that, I'm available for questions if there, if there are any questions from uh, the commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for discussion from the commission? Commissioner Dane.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I have uh, quite a few. I was going to hold some of them, but it seems like this is the part where, um, if we want any teeth in this, um, this is where it would come in. So, um, I think I'll probably keep most of my questions in, in this item on the agenda and see where we go from here. Um, so one of the pieces i, in our packet that was um, discussed, I have some concerns about. Obviously, most of the comment we've received is, I support this type of development. We need this in Helena. However, there's concerns around traffic and public safety. Um, one of the things that really caught my eye was, um, without an entrance from Euclid, um, it would extend emergency services response time. Um, the comment was particular from HPD, and I'm wondering if, and I think that, um, I don't know if, who is on from, oh, is it Officer Petty here? Um, I'm wondering if someone from the Helena Police Department could maybe talk about um, response times and, and what kind of difference that makes when you have a direct route that would come from Euclid versus what they have proposed as of now, um, in terms of responding to emergencies.
Officer Petty, I don't know if uh,
Can you hear?
Have the information readily.
No, I don't have that information really. Mayor, Commission, thanks for uh, having me comment. We don't have exact response times. What I would uh, compare it to currently would be the uh, West Side or the, sorry, the East Side of town. Mountain View Meadows. And currently, we have to go off Highway twelve east there to crossroads to Alice Street and into that subdivision. So that's a similar route, I guess. And until it's until we have it established, and I'm just looking over at our map there because of the the three, I think it was Granite, correct, coming in through Kessler School there? And then Hyawath and Winston. And I can't, I can't remember who was talking about it, but having something off Highway twelve west there and then whoever was saying that wasn't going to be possible. But yes, that would increase response types having to go through the neighborhood there.
Okay, thanks. Um, and I guess this is a question in similar vein in terms of, um, what was included in the um, traffic impact study that the applicant presented and then, um, they say Helena West Side Group had, had their own evaluation done. I'm wondering, um, Director Knopki, um, can you maybe talk about, you know, how we as a commission take into consideration these varying um, perspectives? And, you know, do you think that, I mean, does the applicant's traffic study, is it complete?
Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, give me just a moment. I'm not sure if he is unable to mute. His audio is, is over the phone. So give me just a moment.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, uh, thank you for the question. Um, you know, initially, when the, the initial TIS was, uh, was given for review by the transportation engineer, there were questions on the counts and several other aspects that, um, were asked of, um, the developer and their traffic engineer. Um, some were, uh, were answered, um, some still left, uh, a little bit of, or some concerns. Um, and then in response to the the additional traffic study that was, um, provided by Sanders Stewart, um, there was obviously some issues that were brought up. I do not know, and I, I can't say for the, the developer's traffic engineer, if their traffic engineer went back and reviewed those, I think he said eighteen concerns and, um, he revised per those concerns or have, uh, looked to change the development or change their practices or change the, the design. The other issue that did come up, um, that was stated earlier was the fact that because of this and the, because of the traffic concerns, um, one of the comments that staff has made was that, um, after each phase, a new traffic study would be done to look at the impacts that this development was going to have to the area.
Okay, um, that's helpful. Um, I guess my, I have two more questions, Mister Mayor, if it's okay if I keep going. Okay.
Please.
Um, so I am pretty concerned about, um, the ingress and egress if there were a fire on Mount Helena, which, you know, is entirely possible. Um, considering, you know, this development's proximity, um, to our open land. Um, considering, you know, this development's proximity um to our open lands. Um, and so with that, I guess I'm, you know, why, why is, and maybe this is a question for the developer, you know, why do you not have included in the plan multiple um routes for egress and ingress in terms of, um, you know, similar to um like uh Reader's Village, um, where you have multiple ways to get in and out um from from different parts of the neighborhood. Um, that's one thing that I I, it was in our public comment and obviously something that I think we need to be taking into consideration.
Go ahead, Sussex.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Um, I guess, you know, as discussed here, one of the big limitations was going off Highway twelve there. In addition to the correspondence we had from MDT, um, you know, if there was a road there, we did look at a road there at one time. And if you took it diagonally northwest, you know, being on Highway twelve to the southeast um to get that road to meet city standards is, you know, you need more length than that to get it to meet city standards. It's about a seventy-foot cut coming off Highway twelve. Um, we do have quite a few accesses to the east. I think it's four, you know, that connect there to Parker Granite and to the network of all the other blocks in town. Um, but we definitely share that concern with fire access. Um, we do feel, however, that there are, there are accesses to the east, you know, a fire like Commissioner Dean mentioned would likely come from the south. And this evacuation, if we were to get evacuated, our traffic would be going to the east. And uh I'll let Jeremy Fadness speak a little bit to that as well, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Here, as Jeremy's raising his hand, I'll continue on one more thing. Uh, as this is Ron Bartsch again, um, the other point that's important is that is conditioned that we actually do some fire mitigation on this property. Currently, this property has a stand of forest. And similar to the land that was to the south of here, where you as a city and in in uh in working with Prickey Peril and Trust, went through and did a lot of fire mitigation. That's also intended to do on this parcel of land as well, increasing the safety of this land. Second thing, when you actually bring in all the water, uh, the fire hydrants, all those things that currently don't exist over there, you're again increasing a lot of availability of firefighting capabilities. The most important thing, though, is that there are many, many points of egress to the east. Um, lots of, you know, i- if anybody's on this property, anybody in this part of town, there's lots of ways where they can actually drive through the city, as is the similar to um other portions of Helena where you have um areas where you have a road coming around and and there's points of exit. Um, for example, up on Gold Rush. But Jeremy, there's one I'll pass the rest over to Jeremy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your comments uh and questions, Commissioner Dean. Um, you know, we, we looked at this property uh quite a bit. Um, we've been at this project for for over a year and working with city staff and the developer um to come up with a plan for this project. Um, the the largest constraint that we have with this property is topography, okay? The second is uh location on the edge of the city of Helena, where property um to the east is already developed into single-family residential in the county uh as well as a storage unit project or uh property that's also to the east. This limits our ability to provide access to the east. There's no roads that go off to the east of this property or, excuse me, west of this property, sorry. Um, there's no way to access to the west because there's already developed lots to the west. Um, there's just no existing roads. There's no existing rights away, no existing easements for us to be able to connect to. So that is the reason for uh uh two of our uh proposed dead ends, which is uh Flowery and uh Livesay Court. Both of those um would basically in in an ideal world would extend to the west and uh provide access uh to to future roads or or existing roads to the west, provide that uh that uh connectivity and egress to the west. But because of the property development already there, we're limited and we cannot do that. Second, um, uh, we, uh, there is Lee Court on the north end of the subdivision, um, actually, actually comes up fairly close to Overlook Estates um and Overlook Boulevard. But due to the development of Overlook Estates uh back uh in the two thousands, um, there's actually a significant elevation drop from this property to where Overlook Boulevard is developed to. And that is um approximately uh forty feet of elevation drop in a very short distance. If if we were to try to connect a road from Lee Court down to Overlook Boulevard, uh, that road would end up being thirty-three, seven, nine percent of a grade, which does not meet city standards. Um, and and therefore really does not allow us to develop that further. It provides more traffic into Overlook Estates. And and as we've heard from uh from comment uh uh from people that live in that subdivision, that that probably the least, the the last thing they don't want is additional traffic into their development. So those are really our limitations and why we've had to provide the access we have, we have currently. Um, as Ron and Derek both mentioned, we have four different points of egress from the subdivision. We have Livesay Court or Livesay Avenue, excuse me, that goes onto Hauser Boulevard on the east side. We have Crowley Court, which, which only has a few lots on Crowley Court that accesses Hauser Boulevard on the east side. Then we have Breakman Avenue that is on the south end of the subdivision that accesses Park Drive and then Flowery Court that provides access uh to the, to just the houses on that court um from Park Drive. So we are providing that multiple egress. And as I showed on the map previously, you know, there Granite Street is not the only place where people can get out of this, the west side of Helena in an emergency. There's several roads that branch out to the east of this development um that go on to city streets. And then are you're able to access Highway twelve in order to evacuate the whole west side of town. So the fact that people are going to exclusively use Granite Street and Highway twelve for for emergency routes, I I believe is unrealistic. So those are my comments. I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
Okay. One more question, Mr. Mayor, for Sharon.
Okay.
Okay, um, so and I'm gonna just preface this question with, um, I think that regardless of what happens with this development, MDT will probably have to start thinking about Euclid differently because if this is annexed, you know, this is now part of the city and um the behavior of the traffic will need to change to be reflective of how a city, um, how city streets function, not how um highways function. Um, so with that, Sharon, I'm wondering if you can maybe tell me what is our ability to, and when I'm saying our, I mean, um, the city and and um, the applicant to work with MDT if we applied a condition um to, if this were to be approved, um, to provide uh an entrance from Euclid.
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, MDOT it controls Euclid. So I, so I think with regard to um the constraints on Euclid, I I really can't answer what would convince MDOT. If we place a condition that we do not know there is a possibility of um addressing or have an avenue of dressing. For example, the light on Grant real really quickly. The condition, when we go to the subdivision, the condition with regards to light on granite looks at each phase and then has an analysis that would be looked at and whether or not to decide the light. We have no similar situation. There are serious constraints that make it a little bit different. So given the current topography and everything else, I think it would need an engineer and perhaps David might have a sense of what it would take to move MDOT. But if we place a condition that cannot be accomplished, one would question uh why we would place that condition and just not look at another different action for the subdivision. But Mister, maybe Mister Knopki has some sense of what the process is to reverse some of MDOT's thinking.
Reverse? Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually have a a line of questions that are similar to that exact topic. Um, so maybe we can flush this out a little bit more. Um, so, Mr. McConnell, um, and this question probably is is for Mr. McConnell or for Director Haugen. But you um, you had up on the slides, the growth policy. And I I want to talk a little bit about um the conversations around the the growth plan um that was ultimately passed in two thousand nineteen. So I don't know if you have that slide readily available. This is the one I think both you all and the applicant had um sort of projected, you know, potential growth. And I am specifically wondering, so um yeah, and I think it's, yep, so, so you've got kind of what I think that is like a purple box around what this proposed development is. So the, that kind of deeper yellow, um, this development encompasses that entire area in the growth plan. Is that right?
Mayor, Commissioner O'Loughlin, um, that, the the box is larger than what the actual development is. You can see, um.
Are you able to zoom in? Yeah, okay, great.
So, if you can see my cursor, this white area here is Hauser Boulevard. Um, and this is Park Drive that extends up here. So the development basically encompasses this area.
That area, okay. So I I guess the question to you and to Director Haugen is just in the conversations around the growth plan and identifying this as um, you know, potential area for annexation. What conversations were there uh in relation to Euclid and the use and the use of Euclid for for a potential development?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner O'Loughlin, um, uh, Paul, what do you mean by use of Euclid for a potential development, just as a transportation arterial, as an activity center? I mean, there are a whole host of uses that the growth policy envisions for a for a road like like Euclid. One of which is a ma- means of conveyance, obviously, right? And another would be as a potential growth center. Um, and I believe I I mentioned in my presentation briefly that um, we believe the growth plan, the growth policy that was updated um identifies this area and intends it to be one of those supportive um supportive links that uh provide those um activity centers with uh, you know, potential users, I guess. Maybe that's a cold way to put it, but it it envisions that as a supportive supportive neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just kind of curious if there were conversations around is, was the intent in sort of looking at this as an, as a potential area for annexation? Was there an assumption that um that there would be an additional outlet onto Euclid? Or that that development would utilize existing city infrastructure? Or city streets?
Sure, um, Mayor, Commissioner O'Loughlin, um, the growth policy is really a fifty thousand foot view, a hundred thousand foot view. Um, conversations about individual properties um didn't really take place. There were conversations, I can tell you, about um altering the urban standards boundary, um, which we did um to reflect the Fort Harrison zoning. Um, but this property was left in, obviously. Um, and we didn't really get down to that level of detail. To the neighborhood plan for that area, you know, that might be a a topic of conversation, but for the overall growth policy, it was not.
Okay. And then just one quick more, one more question to to the staff. Have, were you all part of the conversations um with MDT in relation to this development?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioner O'Loughlin, we reached out to MDT um as a, as a matter of course for for this particular project um as we do to a number of agencies, you know, including Fish, Wildlife and Parks, um, et cetera. They returned um with a no comment. Uh, this, I can't remember exactly what they said, but it was um to the effect that we don't have any comments related to this um particular proposal. Um, the applicant uh reached out to, or once became clear that this was going to be an issue, the applicant did reach out to MDT directly to inquire about that possibility. Um, and I believe the uh MDT came back with, this is not something we would allow.
And that's the, I believe, the July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one date that the applicant referenced?
Um, that sounds correct. I don't have the exact date.
Okay, so maybe, uh, Mayor, just one more quick follow-up question on this to, I think, the the applicants to Sussex. Um, so, I mean, we've, we've gotten information that this process started in November of two thousand twenty. Was July of two thousand twenty-one the the first time that you all had had requested um the MDT review this as a possible uh, street entrance?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner O'Loughlin, no, that was as
Oh, sorry, that, that was a question to Sussex.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. So, yeah, that was the first time we reached out to MDT regarding that. We did reach out to them regarding storm, stormwater before. Mainly due to the fact that that access to Highway twelve, um, as mentioned before, you'd have these huge rock walls on both sides of the access. And even if you stretched a road across the subdivision, you couldn't meet city standards with it. And, you know, as you drive by, you, you, there is a cliff there um on the side of the road. So it's just not a feasible access point for that land to be developed.
But what I would say, what I'd add to that is when we did meet with the the concerned citizens and the neighbors in the area, that was one of the points that they had brought up. And as I explained to them at the time, absolutely, we'd look into it. And that's when we did reach out to MDT and see if that is even possibility for them to allow that access point. They, not only is there the topo, topo, topographical considerations, but there's also other MDT requirements regarding curvatures in the roads and things of that nature that they use in analyzing whether or not access points are allowed. The most important thing, though, is that what we did do is we looked at improving the city infrastructure, the street, the streets and the roads, leading in and out of our, in and out of our community that would meet the city and the state standards for access. And like Ed explained earlier, we also worked with the school district to make certain that we'd ensure that that would be a safe access point going through that area. That therefore, the city of Helena planning staff has recommended an approval based off of meeting those requirements as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, are you done?
Yeah, I can, I can be done for right now. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Logan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um.
So in the in the packet, it says that staff are recommending the following conditions because of the intent for annexation, because of the potential impacts identified through the internal review process. These conditions are meant to both mitigate the potential traffic concerns, but also provide users of all modes travel, including emergency service personnel with safe and reliable ingress and egress from the property. So we have three conditions, the first three that, and and we've heard some really significant concerns that folks have had about you know, the impact, the significant impact of traffic in the area. So, conditions one, two, and three for staff. How big of an impact will those have on the concerns as addressed by so many here this evening?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, those three conditions are are part of are part of that puzzle, right? We believe that upgrading those roads to those capacity levels will create a situation that that works for the amount of traffic that's being presented. And there are other conditions related to the preliminary plat application that are included only there, the updated volume and signal and analysis, a congestion study around test of school. But I'm I'm also not a traffic engineer. Mr. Mayor, I might ask David Knopki to jump in here to help shed some light on that.
Mr. Knopki, he shares a light on the question from Commissioner Logan.
Mayor Commissioners, those requirements were put in to handle the traffic coming out of the subdivision. The the biggest component that, you know, that we are hearing tonight is a signal at Granite and Highway twelve. Unfortunately, the way M D T reviews such things is that you have to meet certain traffic warrants, and those have to be actual. In my experience working with M D T, those have to be actual numbers before or getting close to those before they'll move a project forward. That's one of those areas that was brought up by Commissioner Dean, I believe, that I think that we need to work with M D T to reevaluate some of the roadways, not just Highway twelve out there that are becoming, say, more more urban and residential in nature. Green Meadows is another kind of an example and that to start looking more as a cityscape versus a highway scape. And I hope that answered your question, Commissioner Logan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, David.
Okay. At this time, the Commissioner will take a twelve minutes break, twelve minute break, and we'll be back in twelve minutes.
Why don't you take the
and that it's causing problems because if you've made your comments already, it's been taken into record. If you're continuously making the same comments or even more, the others are not allowed to make the comments. I mean, they've been overshadowed. So we advise that if you made your comment, it's been taken into record. There's no need to make several comments in the question and answer after you've made your comments. Okay, we left of after Commissioner Logan spoke. Do we have any other comments from the Commission?
Mayor, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so I I think this is for staff. Mr. McConnell, there's been some discussion around Flowery, and I know Commissioner Halliday sort of posed a question about this at the beginning, but I just following up on this. Did the city originally consider a condition related to the infrastructure on Flowery?
Mayor, Commissioner Loflin, yes, it was comments from our transportation engineer that it might be a good idea to upgrade or to include Flowery Street in in those upgrades. Ultimately, it was it did not carry through just because we had it. We had our route of annexation. And we thought that it was reasonable for or to assume that most of the traffic would head down Park to Hauser and ultimately to that. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I guess, and then one other quick question in this potentially is for perhaps the Streets Department, but there's been some conversation around if if a road were to be developed onto Euclid, sort of the grade of 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 that of that road. Do you have a sense of what the what the road cut is up on Reader's Alley? I mean, that definitely was an example that came to mind for me in reviewing the app, the application. Do you have a sense of an example that came to mind for me in reviewing the app, the application. Do you have a sense of what how how this this location on Euclid and the grade compares to what was developed on Reader's Alley? Maybe for Mr. Director Knopki or his staff?
Uh, yes, Mayor Commissioners. Um, I don't have the the percent grade of readers. Uh, that rode up to Reader's Village, um, or to the subdivision up there. Uh, I would say that I would pro- I would agree with the developers engineer that there would be significant road cuts. I just don't know if it was a very brief discussion that we've had with them on that. Um, so, you know, maybe there's a another possibility to connect out to Highway 12 out there. It just may not have been a hasn't come to light yet. But that's a it is difficult to get access to MDT facilities. I mean, that's again, I reiterate that that's something that the city and MDT need to try to come to some agreement on in these kinds of situations.
Commissioner?
Okay, thank you.
Any final comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just one final comment. Um, I think that, uh, you know, I I support development here. I think that it's consistent with our growth policy. Um, and I think that the public comment that we pursued overwhelmingly says the same thing. I don't think that the um developer here or the, I I don't think that we've necessarily addressed all of the concerns particularly around public safety as it pertains to traffic that the neighborhood has voiced. Um, and uh, you know, I I can, I would be in support of an additional condition to um, address that public safety issue and um, you know, work, attempt to work with MDT in in some sort of entrance from Euclid. Um, I think that Jim Wingeter from MDT has been more willing to have, you know, conversations like this than um, what I understand of 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 previous conversations with MDT and um, I would hate to be in a situation where, you know, we do not exhaust all of our um, all of our our avenues on to get this right. Um, because it, you know, I, these are not things that you can fix later on. Um, and so those are just some of my thoughts, you know, going into this.
Any others? Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I guess just to comment where I'm at, I'm, I feel uh well, a lot of the comments here tonight, a lot of the comments that we've read, all in support in general of development in this area. And the need for housing and but, you know, it seems to me like I've kind of, I'm can I have this choice between adequate or, you know, additional housing for the Helena community and and public safety, public health, public welfare? And um, I don't have a lot of assurances up upfront that that the development can't, you know, as they say, that the development doesn't outpace the infrastructure. And and so I guess I got to say, you know, that I'm struggling with that in terms of public health and welfare and safety and uh, this is generally where I'm at at this point.
Any others?
Yeah, I um, uh, I appreciate the comments and I think Commissioner Dean, you know, your comment about sort of the work with MDT ultimately as we annex in area adjacent to Highway 12, it is part of the city and are we treating this road as if it is a city road? And I think, you know, the answer is is no um, under this proposal today that we have in front of us and that that's just really challenging. Um, I listened to the whole five hour planning board meeting and I think similarly, they 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 were um faced with sort of mixed feelings of this is a a real important area to consider for infill and for develop uh, development and area that is ripe for annexation into the into the city. Um, but I think I am a little disappointed that conversations didn't start with MDT a little earlier and perhaps that the city maybe needs to play a bigger role in those conversations. If we have a growth policy and we want to implement that growth policy, what is the city's responsibility to to be part of those conversations about um the 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 infrastructure that's needed for that? Um, so I uh, but at the same time, I think, you know, Director Haugen is right that if we were, and I don't know if this is Commissioner Dean where where you may be headed. Um, if we were to put on a condition um to require, I think, um, you know, you and I sit on TCC, we've worked with MTT, it is one of the most challenging experiences I have had in the four years of being on the city commission. Um, there is no guarantee um that that MDT uh, you know, will will reverse course. So I I it, I think we're in a really difficult place with this one. I I not, I I would like to believe that the developer that the applicant has worked in good faith with MDT. I don't know. We don't have a lot of information um to show that that was really considered. Um, so you know, I think that's a question for the commission. Do we feel like that is worth um, further discussion and um pursuing?
Any final comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, you know, going into this, I was somewhat conflicted after kind of reading everything and looking at this tonight. This one to me is a pretty easy one on the annexation piece of just voting no. Um, myself, you know, I I think back to a few weeks ago where we we told a developer on one street in the Capitol Hill Mall that their public safety issue uh, related to an ostensible like fire code violation that we never really got substantiation was enough to say public safety problems. Here we've got massive ingress egress problems. We've got traffic counts that are questionable. We've got congestion in the school of the zone. We've got undersized and under capacity streets. Um, how how we could even be saying yes to this one? I mean, I'm, I I wanted to support this one, but looking at where we were two weeks ago, three weeks ago, there's just no way this commission can 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 support annexation at this juncture.
So I I thank the staff for the presentation. I think the um uh applicants, I I got a, I got a crazy question. And I'm hoping uh, interning coats, uh, Mr. McConnell or our Director of Development would help me answer. Should we deny annexation or should we table annexation, whichever way we 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 go? If this stay in the city, what stops the process in the county from happening?
Mr. Mayor, um, if I understand your question, if this does not get approved, what's to stop the process in the county apps? I that they would have the right to approach county to do a major subdivision.
So he continues that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, probably not at this density because of water and sewer and all sorts of things.
So it will be out of our hands.
Uh, the county would ask us for input. Um, but ultimately it would be a county commission decision. But there is a lot of different standards that the county would have. Yeah.
And that's what I'm afraid of. But anyway, I'm also as confused as some of the others and there have been, I mean, the comments that have been made here tonight are concerning. But also I think they work about because I've listened to several the comment, the the comment they're saying that, you know, they're for development if we can work through ABC. We're for development if we can work through ABC. And so I want to see if we um um, the 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 applicants have been involved in this process for a while. Are they willing to make adjustments? Because I know that was some of the problems we faced with that a couple of weeks ago. The applicants were not willing to make adjustment. So I'll just ask this simple question to Sussex. Are you willing to make some of some adjustments to uh the concerns of the community?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Ron Barge again. I appreciate and I respect all the comments. The commission is is uh considering. Um, I I would tell you this, that we've been working on this project for for a very, very long time looking at all these aspects. I would also tell you that if we felt that there's there was a possibility of getting another access point, we absolutely would have done that. In fact, I had our engineers create a model where they tried to create an access off of uh regardless of what the DOT said off of US 12. Um, and and it was not possible. Um, having said that, um, Mr. Mayor, you know, we we continually would like to work with you know, the the city as well as the community to try to address concerns. You know, I believe that there's a lot of opportunity through the existing infrastructure and improvements that that specifically addresses these concerns. The school itself weighed in and said, hey, you know, that that we're working with the school district and and addressing their concerns and and they they voted their their support on understanding that we're going to have this infrastructure and and the and the the homes that will be there. What I would tell the commission is that remember this is a phased development. We specifically proposed it as a phased development. So each phase you as a commission will be able to re-review. So if Phase One goes through and we are, we're conditioned to provide all the infrastructure with Phase One. Once we go to come to Phase Two to Final Platte, the commission once again gets to analyze and says, hey, we have a traffic problem. That would be an obstacle to getting Phase Two Final Platte. That was one of the ways that we were trying to work with the commission is to give that opportunity where you consistently will have that oversight so that we can address issues before they become problems. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but a- answer is, we continue to want to work with the city of Helena, the city staff, as well as the community. But I do believe what has come forward is some really good ideas in working together with the city who has recommended approval and working with the school district, which has done the same. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
I would, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is Derek with Sussex Development. Um, I would just like to second what Ron said there. And my concern, I guess, with with relooking at this at this development and a different scheme is that we're never going to make everybody happy. Um, you know, like Ron said, we incorporated the school district's comments and we accepted all these conditions of approval. Um, the cities continually recommended approval for this. And I'm afraid, you know, if we do go back into review, it's going to be the same, the same circle, unfortunately, where you can't make everybody happy. Um, but thank you very much. Those are my concerns.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask you a quick question? If we were to say include a uh include the staff's conditions and then an additional condition that um requires that the applicant must improve the transportation safety, including the incorporation of the um neighborhood groups, traffic study um that they offered, and the addition of negotiations with MDT to Euclid. And um those, I mean, that or any of the other conditions that the staff has presented, if if one of those conditions is not met, what happens? I guess that's a question for Mr. McConnell, probably.
So what would happen, sorry, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, if I can restate question, what would happen if you impose new conditions and then those conditions were not met?
Staff conditions and then one additional condition.
That is a, that is a good question. I I might have to defer to Sharon on this one.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, in order for them to be annexed, you would have to, they would have to meet all the conditions that you set for annexation. I suppose in a rare incident, you could always amend the intent of annex resolution, but um that then they simply went annex and also the subdivision could not be completed or done because there's no authority for the city to approve a subdivision unless it's annexed.
Right. So I'll introduce Dean a motion.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm going to preface my motion with, I think, I I agree with kind of the sentiments that you had earlier that I would rather, you know, have this be in the city's um court um, because it's going to be something that impacts us regardless. Um, but I do think that we have an obligation, considering that, you know, the overwhelming majority of public comment that we've gotten has been I support this kind of development as long as it's addressing some of the concerns of um, the public safety concerns that continue to be brought up. So um, with that, I would um move um, to conditionally approve a resolution of intention to annex into the city of Helena property described as tract A on the certificate of survey filed as document number three, three, six, zero, eight, five, eight, and all blocks four, five, six, and nine of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the rights of way adjacent to the property and establish conditions of annexation um that include all staff conditions, annexation conditions one through eight, and an additional condition that the applicant must improve transportation safety, including incorporation of the community traffic study offered by the community neighborhood group and the addition of negotiations with the Montana Department of Transportation for an entrance onto Euclid.
Mayor, I Mayor, I have a, I have a question about what that what that additional condition really means. I don't know. Commissioner Dean, are you, are you saying that the annexation is conditioned on? What is it conditioned on related to MDT?
I think on unsufficiently addressing the concerns that are included in the uh neighborhood groups' traffic um evaluation and um negotiating with MDT.
Does, what if, uh, like, like I hear, MDT said it didn't want to be involved. So why did they say that again?
Well, the city has not been involved in those conversations. I do think that we, I mean, I think Commissioner or Director Knopki has and and Rachel have both had, I think, productive conversations. productive conversations with M D T as of late, more productive than we've had before. And I think that it wa- it is worth having those conversations and working to negotiate. A safe, a, a safe solution that addresses some of these neighborhood conditions.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Could I just ask another follow-up to that, Mr. Mayor? So with, there were, there were two pieces I understood, Commissioner Dean. One was uh addressing traffic safety concerns. Is that one of them?
Yes.
So just from, for fleshing that out a little bit. Right? What, what our staff has recommended are upgrades to basically three street conditions that they believe at least in part addresses traffic safety concerns. I, I'm a little concerned about putting a condition, who decides what, what and when this addresses traffic safety concerns? And whether that they've checked that box and whether we should be looking towards greater specificity.
Uh, I think that's a good question. I don't know if Rachel has any thoughts on how she would direct staff to ensure that kind of accountability.
I mean, I guess I just wanted, I don't know if she has a thought on it. You know, the same thing as if we say impose a requirement, they gain access to Highway Twelve. As Sharon indicated earlier, you know, could essentially be in a losery condition. It's impossible. You know, I don't know the law on annexations. I'm not a land use attorney, but I worry about giving them essentially a vague condition, make it safe. Um, and how, how they ever meet that requirement.
Mayor, would you like me?
If you have, yes, please address it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Both Commissioners for your questions. You know, um we're not sure if it's even feasible to connect to U S Twelve, but the expense and, and the expense, um we can address. What we have is, is a, an excellent traffic study from the neighborhood. We also have the traffic study from the applicant. And we can revisit the connection to U S Twelve, but ultimately asking for, I believe, and, and um Planner, uh, O'Connell can can correct me. I believe there is a requirement as part of the conditions of annexation, or excuse me, connections of um plat that, and, or Sharon, or Director Haugen. Um, that an additional traffic study and traffic analysis needs to take place. And in each time something is added, whether there's a right-of-way dedication or additional modification in the neighborhood to the plat, those requirements can be analyzed by each phase. So um, what I'll say is, I'll, I'll punt to, to Eric, who uh Director, excuse me, uh Deputy Attorney Coats, and then also to Director Haugen as to whether or not we can ask. And as part of this annexation, um, a caveat on top of it, which includes all of the additional modifications of the plat. Um, and each phase, those, that traffic study of the neighborhood be reflected. Um, so, but I would punt it to those two Mayor for further study.
Attorney Coats.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. My concern with the proposed condition, the additional condition from Commissioner Dean is that it's not definitive enough
Right.
to know if it's ever been accomplished. The condition that deals with negotiation with M D T in my opinion, just says they have to go and talk with M D T. They don't have to come to an agreement that there's any new mode of ingress, egress off of Highway Twelve. They just have to go talk to him about it. So those are my concerns.
Okay. This, we're going, we, we, we're going to be going in circles for a bit. We either move forward with a vote or we seek to table. And then we find out from our, uh, from the applicant, if he would like to table this.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess on, in that vein, I mean, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I just for the, the acting city attorney tonight. Um, it's my understanding that we have to make a decision on the plat question relatively soon, I'm guessing. Given the time constraints that are on plats, if no decision is made, for example, a tabling, wouldn't that, and we bump up against the deadline, isn't that an approval?
Mayor and Commissioner Halliday, that's correct. So originally, because this is a major subdivision, the city had, I believe, eighty days. The parties agreed to a deadline of November twenty ninth, a week from today, for a final decision on the subdivision preliminary plat.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Director Haugen.
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, you are correct. However, if the applicant would, would be agreeable to another extension and could request that this evening, you could table it until a date certain and to gather more information with regard to these outstanding issues. That would be one option. I don't know if that is something that um you would want to entertain. The other is um vote on the annexation, because we do have the subdivision, the pre-zone, the variance is left this evening. So that's going to be quite a long evening. Um, so that would be one option to consider. If for some reason, and I'm not suggesting you do that, um uh Assistant, um, Co- Attorney Coats and I talked. If, for example, the, the annexation does not get approved, then it's our recommendation that um we, was Eric, I correct me if I'm wrong, that we table or we just um table the rest of the agenda or just act on it.
I think we have to, if, if we, if we table it, we have to table the rest of the agenda.
So.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Attorney Coats.
Uh, yes, so if, if I'm understanding the question correctly, if you, Sharon, you're asking if the annexation matter is tabled, what happens to the rest of the agenda items or what are the commission's options with respect to the other agenda items?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yes, I think that the the whole process in my mind is, in my opinion, is contingent upon the annexation. Um, i- if the, if the commission expresses that it does not want to annex this piece of property, uh, there's a question as to whether the commission has uh, the jurisdiction to exercise over a property and go through the preliminary plat process. With respect to pre-zoning, pre-zoning is uh, very connected by our ordinances to the annexation process. So if the, if the commission tables annexation, if the commission denies annexation, there's really no reason to take up the pre-zone matter tonight. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Sussex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you calling on me. May I suggest, because I can see the questions the commission is grappling with. We do have a strong desire to work with the commission as well as the residents, as well as D O T to create solutions that make sense. I therefore would request respectfully that all of these agenda items are tabled until your next meetings, December twentieth. In that time period, I would like to meet with city staff as well as uh those other parties and see if we M B T and see if we can't come to some type of solution that is more favorable to everyone, or at least have answers to your questions, if that's possible, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it's possible. Commissioners. Do we have any objections?
None here.
Yeah, Mayor, and I, I would just emphasize, and I very much appreciate the applicant's willingness to sit back down and discuss potential options. Um, I, I think that uh I, I would really like to get to yes on annexation. I think the design, there are just a lot of questions. And so I just want to see my gratitude to the applicant for their willingness to continue the conversations about what changes may be possible. And I think that also, again, if there, if there is a willingness by M D T to work on a potential solution, um, I think that, you know, that, that it may, I understand the design may have to be modified, but we could potentially be addressing sort of long-term issues with traffic in this area. Um, so I, I recognize that that's there's probably mu- many conversations that need to be had with M D T. Um, but would certainly appreciate um Sussex and, and the applicants moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Good, Attorney Coats.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If you could ask the developer Sussex by, I, I think we need an express I don't know, express agreement on the record that Mr. uh Barch is open to extending the commission's deadline to approve, conditionally approve or deny the subdivision until a date that is after that December twentieth date. So if he could just indicate to us, you know, he's in agreement of extending the deadline under uh, city ordinance and the deadline, i- it's also set forth in state law.
Sussex.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would like to make that request that we make that extension. My question, and this is more of city staff, I do not know your schedule. So I can suggest dates, but perhaps you, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, first of all, motion yes, please do extend. But then what I would suggest is perhaps we do a thirty-day extension. And then with the understanding that in that time period, we meet with city staff and or with the commission to discuss some of these, these issues. But you'd have to tell me of your procedures and if that would work or not. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Attorney Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the uh agreement for an extension. I, I guess I'll leave it to Sharon and the city manager to see if the proposed extension would work for their schedules and the city's meeting agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if, A, it's my understanding that on table for consideration is that we will extend this to the December twentieth meeting? Or are you suggesting, Mr. Coats, that the decision be made after that December twentieth meeting going into January? Just for clarification for me, I wasn't quite clear on what you were suggesting.
So it sounds to me like Mr. Barch is uh open to a thirty-day extension, so I believe that would put us at December twenty eighth, twenty ninth, by which we had to make a decision. So I think any commission action is going to have to take place at a meeting prior to that date.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Coats, now I understand. I wasn't quite tracking that additional. So um, that would be our process with regard to extension. We do have a request from the applicant. And the commission would have to act on that request to accept his request for extension and table the items until the December twentieth date. And staff will work with that to try to accomplish that, um. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Halliday.
Just from a process standpoint, and it's probably for um Director Haugen, I mean, is thirty days enough? Um, I don't know what the plan is, right? Or we just, are we putting these same agenda items, and maybe that's for the commission, back on the agenda in their exact form as they are tonight? With just the possibility that there will be other sort of oral representations and possibilities for the future discussed? Or are we envisioning like a package brought back with new and additional requirements and are there different notice requirements? Ms. uh Director Haugen, if there are any proposed changes in conditions, um, does any of this need to go back to any of the city's advisory boards? Is this something that essentially needs to be moved into twenty twenty-two? Um, you know, is there a longer period of time necessary for an extension? Realistically, if you're looking to get something done in thirty days, just from a pure process standpoint, I assume something has to change. Um, because we're looking for something greater from, from the developer at this point.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, if I understand your question, the, I, uh, what I'm hearing you ask is thirty days sufficient to meet with the developer and come up with another or additional commission, um, additional conditions that may address some of the concerns that the applicants could have. Is that the essence of your question?
Yeah, I mean, I get that the developer could come in tomorrow and say, psych, there actually is a connection to Highway Twelve. Here it is. What I'm saying is if, 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 if the commission is saying tonight, and I'm not saying that it is, but it sounds like it, this thing is not acceptable in the current form, and at least one new condition is going to need to be put on there somewhere. Does that trigger any other requirements? Whether it's notice and opportunity to be heard for the public, recourse to the zoning board, the planning commission, anything like that in the change of either our internal documents or the applicant's documents. I don't care what the condition is. I just want to know if that condition, that triggers anything where we'd really be looking at sometime in January or later where, where you'd actually get this all done in order to meet the steps of the process. I'm just trying to figure out the process. And does it all take place in thirty days? Or are we back here with ideas and thoughts and stuff, but there's another process um picked up for the commission to then deal with again in thirty days?
I, now, I, now I better under- Commissioner Halliday, now I better, better understand your question. I thought I did. Certainly for, let me start with the pre-zoning. Certainly for the pre-zoning, um things aren't going to change. If that proposal would change, that would definitely require going back to the zoning commission. And we would have to publicly notice that. And we would not be able to make the December zoning commission meeting. So we would move on to January. Have uh the annexation, the commission can set whatever conditions that they want on the annexation. So that could, if things got worked out. If on the subdivision, if the findings of fact that the commission has um and if any conditions that staff would recommend at that point, if any of those conditions do, could not be supported by the findings of fact, we may have to go back to the planning board with the new findings of fact and conditions. So, um, so it'd be key to that without knowing, um. So I, I'm comfortable with the annexation. I'm comfortable with the pre-zoning. Um, I would have to sit down, Eric and I would have to, or, or staff to figure out what we may look at to change the conditions of the subdivision. And maybe we just focus on if there's additional information needed for the annexation. This is where I'm struggling a little bit. Um, if that's, the commission feels that that is where some of this gets addressed is through the annexation, is some of what we've been discussing this evening is annexation related. I think we could come up with a set of conditions. And it would be up to the commission to decide if we've addressed all the public comments. I don't know if that directly answered your question, but I did the best I could.
No, that, that's incredibly helpful. And I mean, I think, I think it's something this, this commission needs to keep in mind. Because of the order and way this came up, right, we discussed sort of everything. Um, and, and I don't know that this commission in sort of the current batch of information tonight is capable of really plucking and saying, well, this condition is relative to annexation, but this condition is, you know, uh, related to the preliminary plat and this can- related to the preliminary plat, and this condition is, and that's where I get a little bit worried for the sake of the commission, right, and the city of Helena as a body. I agree with you, attach all the conditions to annexation because that's the, this individual, this entity wants to bring its property into the city, and there are conditions that go along with it. But I understand that there are also legal considerations with, as to whether, you know, those conditions have a sufficient nexus, whether they should be tied to the preliminary plat. And so if there is that concern, that's where I'm just trying to drive at, that there'd be concern about that plat, because that's the one with the timing issue for the city. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there that I'm not sure that 30 days, you know, I don't want to put your guys back up against the wall since we're basically waving our hands around and saying, we can't figure this out tonight, you guys go figure it out in 30 days for us. So to me, it's like, tell us right now if you need 60, because you got Mr. Barch on the line, and he seems willing to work on this, so now would be the time to do it.
But he did say 30 days, so unless you don't want to be on the commission by then, that's all.
I already told you how I'm going to vote, Mr. Mayor.
This is the last comment, and then we'll move forward. This, I mean Sussex, what say you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I suggested 30 days was because this commission is changing as of the first. However, I am opening, open to having that go beyond that timeframe. I was just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, to think about what you guys are thinking, but I just knew that the commission was changing. So I am open that we spend enough time so that this is properly vetted. I have no problem with that at all. I would also mention, Mr. Mayor, that I actually did just chat with Mr. Zimmerman, and he's very open also to working with us on trying to create some solutions. And I think that that's very positive. So that, yes, whatever time that you believe we need, if we want to table this here for 60 days, you know, that's up to you, Commission, if that works for you or not.
Okay, Sussex is willing to work with us on that issue, so. Mr. Coats, so for process, what's the next step?
Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we agreed to an extension with Sussex, did we do that through an additional new agenda item on a new, like a new city commission agenda? How did we do that?
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, normally, we aren't agreeing to an extension during the course of a meeting. Normally, it's outside the process. So that's why we handled that, because it is the commission who has to accept that extension request. We have a request on behalf of the developer to consider an extension of 60 days. I don't know if the mayor wants to take additional comment on that. And then I think we could be comfortable going ahead with the 60-day extension, but.
I would turn it over to the Commissioner, what say Commissioners? Do you have any objections?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that you would need a motion to table and to accept the applicant's 60-day extension. I'll say I'm comfortable with that, though knowing that I will not be here in 60 days. But I also feel like I think it's, I mean, I think we all want to get this right. If there is, if there is an opportunity to get it right with a little bit more time, you know, I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
But I'd be interested in what others think.
Mr. Mayor, I'll say, as someone who won't be here in 60 days, I'm comfortable with it as well. I've already told you how I feel about the current situation with it, and I'm willing to forego the opportunity to vote no on it, which I would be in 30 days, we wouldn't get anything done, and I'd be back here voting no again. Because I do think that this development is good, and I do think we need this housing in the city, and I do think it needs to be a better product. And so I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna forego the opportunity to say no on it and hope that in the process, the three of you who will be here and your fellow future commissioners are gonna figure out how to work with this entity to put in this needed housing in the city, but also address the concerns that have been raised, and it's not going to be easy, but you know, I'm hoping 60 days somehow helps.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Logan?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just ask a question, so if I understand correctly, what we're needing to do is to table this item and then to consider an extension of 60 days?
Correct.
Is that jive with everyone?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think it's accepting the 60-day extension.
Accept, okay. I'll try it. Go for it, Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Mayor, I would move to table a resolution of intention to annex into the city of Helena property described as track A on the certificate of service filed as document number 336-0858, and all of blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the rights of way adjacent to the property, and establish conditions for annexation. I would also move to accept the applicant's offer of an extension for 60 days to consider this.
Second.
Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday? Commissioner Dean? Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Public hearings Alpha and Bravo are the same, so we'll move on to Bravo. That is approval, final passage of an ordinance that granted TDS Metrocom LLC a cable franchise and allow the company construct, operate, regulate, and control a cable communication system in Helena City limit. Manager Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, this is the second reading to approve it, final passage, the ordinance granting a franchise to TDS Metrocom LLC and allowing the construction of the systems and add another add another company into the cable and communication system in Helena. I'll also offer up directors, let's see here, city deputy city attorney and acting tonight, city attorney Eric Coat, if you have any additions.
Attorney Coats, do you have any addition to make?
I do, I have one comment or one item to bring to your attention. So in your copy of the franchise agreement in section 15.9, there is a date to be filled in for the expiration of this franchise, and currently it reads November blank 2031. What we are suggesting to change is to change that to December blank 2031, and here's the reason why. Pursuant to law, an ordinance is not effective until 30 days after passage. So in this case, if you approve this franchise, it really wouldn't, the approval wouldn't be effective until 30 days from today. And so in order for the franchise to truly be or truly have a duration of 10 years, we need to adjust that date in section 15.9 again to read December blank 2031. That's the only addition I have.
Okay. Madam Manager, are you finished?
Thank you, Mayor, and we also have additional technical support from our outside attorney with Bob Duchen, who's also on as well. Thank you, Mayor, Commission.
Captain Flubak?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. If I think, Mr. Coats, explained the reason for the change, we have been negotiating with TDS. We are supportive of the cable franchise that is now before you. This is a non-exclusive franchise, and it will bring additional competition to the marketplace in Helena. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have this evening. And by the way, I'm Bob Duchen, VP of Vervox Communications, consultant to the city of Helena.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? I see none. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised, and I see no written public comment on this item.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I will move to approve final passage of an ordinance granting a franchise to TDS Metrocom LLC and allowing the construction, operation, regulation, and control of a cable communication system within the city of Helena, Montana, with the staff's recommended amendment to section 15 dot nine with the December blank 2021 date.
Second.
Any final discussion from the commission?
Just clarification, oh, sorry.
I think you're gonna get it. Commissioner Dean, go ahead.
At 2031, right? Yes, thank you, sorry.
Is that what you want, Commissioner Logan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. And apparently, we will now move on to, is there anyone in the, from the public wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are you gonna address the other items on the agenda related to the West Side subdivision? Because we need to move through those and table those items as well.
Okay. Yes, we will. Okay. Item C, consider denial or ordinance pre-zoning property described as track A on a certificate of survey identified as document number 3360858 in all of blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R2 and R3. Manager Hollis Shaw? You have anything to add?
Nope, I do not, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I would move to table an ordinance pre-zoning property described as track A on the certificate of survey identified in the document number 3360858 in all of blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R2 residential and R3 residential.
Second.
Is, any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I was having trouble with my mute button. Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Item Delta, to approve, conditionally approve or deny the request for preliminary plat approval made by ECO Development LCC for the West Side major phase subdivision general located west of the Houser Boulevard and Granite Avenue intersection to set conditions of approval. Manager Hollis Shaw, do you have anything to add?
I do not, thank you, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion. Go for it, Commissioner Logan. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll move to table the variance from section 12 dash four dash two dot C, the Helena City code. Allow each of the following blocks of the West Side major phase subdivision to exceed 600 feet in length. Phase one, phase two, or phase one, Love Z, Lee VZ Avenue, phase three Lee Drive, and phase three Breakman Avenue.
Okay, we were actually on Delta, but you went to Echo.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Quit.
Second.
She's right. Oh, that's Delta.
No, you were reading Echo.
Nope, that's Delta, I think. I'll second whichever item it is.
Oh, am I reading my is?
This is this block.
You're from the agenda, okay, okay, all right. Mine's on the other one, it's not correct. Okay, is any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday? Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Echo, to approve, conditionally approve or deny the request for preliminary plat approval made by ECO Development LLC for the West Side major phase subdivision general located west of Houser Boulevard and Granite Avenue intersection to set conditions of approvals. Manager Hollis Shaw, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not, thank you, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to table the preliminary plat for the West Side major phase subdivision. Second.
Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners and employees. Okay. We're now at public communications. Is there anyone in the, from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised at this time. I would ask for some direction from you, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to read some additional public comment that was in the written record from earlier that was not considered.
Go for it.
From those individuals that had not previously made public comment, I have Greg Olson, 42-year resident of 2660 Stewart Street. I am concerned that the developer has left out Stewart Street as a source of access for the development. There are four streets on the east side of the project, Nighthausser, Stewart, and Flowery that are likely to get used extensively during peak times to and from work, to and from school, cars and pedestrians. In my opinion, Nighthausser and Stewart are the most likely as they are further north than Flowery. As proposed by Sussex, there would be no improvements tonight, paving on Houser from park to granite, and no improvements of Stewart or Flowery. If this project is to be approved, all of those streets should be upgraded at the developer's expense to ensure public safe access. Mr. Barch consistently cites the project as being a source of affordable housing. What are the current projected prices with those homes? What are the current projected prices with those homes that Sussex considers affordable? Carolyn Truscott, my concerns remain the same as when a group of West Side residents met with Mr. Barch and his team this summer, and that is if the developer isn't willing to cut back the number of units built, address the safety issues of additional traffic and burdens to city water and sewer, or consider dropping cul-de-sacs and funds down for the whole thing. As I wrote to Mr. Barch, just because land can't be, can be developed, doesn't mean it should be. Hannah Marin, Marin Commissioners, if another access point can't be done, then this development should not be done to this high of density to ensure safety and proper, proper traffic concerns. Patrick Marin, Marin City Commissioners, the Parks Board, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board have all denied the current plan. I ask that you respect the decision of these boards and deny the current plan. Thank you for your consideration, Patrick Marin, 2590 Knight Street. And those are the final written public comments from individuals that didn't previously get an opportunity to make public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you. And we still have no raised hands.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any final comments from the commission? Manager Hollis Shaw, you've been pretty quiet. What's going on?
Oh, uh, no comments, sir. Thank you for asking. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.